Good evening, everybody. Welcome and thank you for joining us again on another beautiful night. We appreciate you spending it with us. I'm going to call our May 3, 2018 meeting to order. It's approximately 6 o'clock in the Mona Lisa Drexler Chamber. And I'm going to start with a non-saccharine invocation. We'll follow that by the Pledge of Allegiance. Our flag is right back there. Sometimes hard to find when you're standing up. So if you'll join me in rising for an invocation. Tonight, we are grateful for increasing sunlight, greening grass, nubs of rhubarb, budding trees, and slowly melting snow, otherwise known as spring. We're also grateful for our community, for its caring members, its independent nature, its commitment to each other, respect, and investing in our bright future together. This evening, let us listen to each other with grace, open to new perspective, remembering we all want the same thing: strong, educated, healthy children, families, neighborhoods, and communities. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to note for the record that Mr. Lojuski and this major excuse this evening. Mr. Quist?
Here.
Mr. Tackey?
Here.
Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Lawrence?
Here.
We have school board representative, Mr. Rice?
Here.
And Ms. Dodge?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. So we're going to start with a safety announcement, just so that we know how to get out of our chambers should we need to. We have three emergency exits, the double doors we all came in through. There's a little single door on the right and on the left that we can go out. If you go out this door, you'll go to the right, out to the parking lot. And if you go out this door, you'll go to the left and go out to the parking lot. So I'm going to ask the Assembly members if anyone requests the removal of any item from the consent agenda. I see no one indicating that they wish to. Does anyone need to declare a possible conflict of interest for items on the consent agenda? I don't see anyone indicating they do. So that takes us to citizens' comments. We have two citizens' comments that we have at the beginning of the meeting, and then we'll have a different citizens' comment on the budget a little later in the meeting. So the first citizens' comment is called Citizens' Comments A, and Citizens' Comments A are on agenda items that are not up for public hearing. Are you having a hard time hearing me? Thank you for letting me know. Okay. I'll work at that. Is that better? I think we must have a problem then. Beyond me speaking loudly. We're working on it. Thank you for letting me know. Sounds like they're... Are they on at all? Right there, huh? That could be difficult, but I'll crouch. So let's see. Let me start at the beginning then. Sounds like I wasn't communicating well at all. So we'll start with... We start by having citizens' comments that are for items not on... That are on the agenda but not up for public comment. Then we'll go to items that are not on the agenda at all, and then we'll go through a little bit more, and then we'll get to public comments on the budget. So right now, I'm going to open Citizens' Comments A, which are items on the agenda but not scheduled for public hearing. And I have Scott Calder signed up. And if anyone else wishes to speak on items on the agenda but not available for public hearing, we have an empty seat. Mr. Calder, welcome. Please give us your name and spell your last name and tell us your neighborhood.
Good evening. Scott Calder, C-A-L-D-E-R, Esther area. And so I wanted to speak on 2018-22, thanking and honoring the clerk Nancy. And I just wanted to say that I met Nancy almost 40 years ago, and I've always known and admired her as an honest, sincere, hard-working, detail-oriented person. I just think the borough is really well-served by her. And by extension, if I may, Madam Chair, I think all the people at the clerk's office are very high caliber and extremely valuable public service. And so I feel like she's sort of continuing that tradition and providing for the continuation of that tradition after her service. And I appreciate that. That's reflected in the resolution. Even just today, I had questions about the documents for this evening's meeting, and she was able to explain to me that we have a budget ordinance and a Finance Committee recommendations, substitute attachments A and C. There's some blue inked items in one of the documents, and it was a little confusing to me after I spent about 45 minutes in the parking lot reading over all of it. And even just while we were standing there, she discovered a minor distribution error in the documents and had that corrected just in the five minutes while we were standing there. So I just think that's tremendous. And I would contrast that with my recent experience at the school district, where I took Assembly members' advice to go over there and talk to them about their issues, which were brought to your last meeting. And the documents over there are kind of nebulous and ambiguous. And so I had the feeling when I was over there that the message to me as a citizen testifying was, "Don't worry about it. It's all okay." And so I couldn't tell that from reading the documents, though. Unlike here, where the documents are of excellent quality, and certainly Nancy and others have provided for that over the years, and I really appreciate that. So good job on transparent public information.
Thank you very much, Mr. Calder. We'll see if there's anything... Any questions for anyone? Please let the record know that Mr. Roberts has joined us.
Could I maybe just add another short thing?
Absolutely.
You know, the documents are very complicated, and I think it's really beyond the experience of normal people to have an understanding of what it is that's going on at any given time at all, really. You know, it's just... It's difficult for... If you don't pay attention to it a lot, you just can't encompass the complexity of it. So that's... I mean, you know, bravo to the clerk's office.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that, and we agree. Any other comments under items that are on the agenda but not available for public comment? Seeing no one coming forward, I'm going to close Citizens' Comments A, and I'm going to open Citizens' Comment B. And these are for items that are not on the agenda at all. So anything not on the agenda, if anyone wishes to speak about it, now would be a good time to come forward. Seeing no one coming forward, I'm going to close public hearing. On Citizens' Comment B...
Yes? On B? On something not on the agenda? Okey-dokey. I was too quick with the gavel here. Let me open it back up. And please give us your name and...
Earl S. Weed, W-E-E-D, Roar area. I know a way the borough can save some money is turn the heat down in this room. And it's extremely... Maybe it's only $5 or $10 a meeting, but at $5 or $10, you could put mine water or something, or more cupcakes. That's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weed. We agree. Okay, we're going to close comments again. And I'm sorry, Mr. Quist may have a question for you.
I was going to ask Mr. Weed a question. Are you aware that on most days, there aren't as many people in the room, and it's actually quite chilly in here?
I realize that we do produce a lot of heat, and sometimes extra heat, too, that we don't... I'll be polite, I won't say anymore.
Thank you very much. Well, I like that we're off to a humorous start. It helps us all, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Thank you. So that takes us to approval of agenda and consent agenda. Approval of the consent agenda passes all routine items indicated by an asterisk on the agenda. Consent agenda items are not considered separately unless an Assembly member so requests. In the event of such a request, the item is returned to the general agenda. So does anyone need to declare a possible conflict of interest for items on the consent agenda? I see none. Are there any other items to be removed from the consent agenda before it's read? I see no one raising their hand. Clerk, would you please read the consent agenda? Our esteemed and soon-to-be-gone clerk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Under Communications to the Assembly, we have a memorandum from Jill S. Dolan, Borough Attorney, requesting approval of selection of outside counsel for the Board of Equalization. Under consideration of calendar new business, we have a resolution number 2018-22, a resolution honoring Nancy Ashford-Bingham, MMC Borough Clerk, for her 34 years of stellar public service to the citizens of the Fairbanks North Star Borough. And this is sponsored by the Fairbanks North Star Borough Assembly. And that concludes your consent agenda this evening.
I'd like for motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve the agenda and the consent agenda.
So it's been moved by Mr. Lawrence and seconded by Mr. Tackey to approve our consent agenda. And that's going to lead us to an unusual part of the meeting. We're going to read this resolution to Ms. Bingham, Ashford-Bingham. You want us to vote on the agenda. Here we are, trying to recognize our clerk, and this is why we have them. Yes, please. Would you please take the vote?
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Quist?
Yes.
Mr. Tackey?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge?
Yes. Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none?
Seven zero.
It's approved. She's just trying to delay this next bit, I think. Okay, Ms. Ashford-Bingham, would you please join me? There we go. Okay. She thought she could get out of it that simply. Little did she know. Do you think she'd stay if we just weren't able to do this?
I didn't think so.
We had to ask. We almost failed it on consent, you know? Okay. So tonight, we're marking a momentous event. A borough clerk plays an enormously important role in the operation of local government, as Mr. Calder noticed. They set the tone, don't they? They interact with the public, and they give the public and the Assembly and the administration comfort that there's a neutral party in the room that is there to help everyone. And Nancy has embodied that. So Nancy has played this role for many years, coaching us through the twists and turns of Robert's rules, and warmly helping the public navigate their government and the sometimes Byzantine processes. It's my honor to read this resolution. So this is a resolution honoring Nancy Ashford-Bingham, MMC, which stands for Master Municipal Clerk, a highly sought-after and hard-earned title, Borough Clerk, for her 34 years of stellar public service to the citizens of the Fairbanks North Star Borough. Whereas Nancy worked her first regular assembly meeting on June 28, 1984, and tonight works her last meeting, which caps a career spanning 34 years, 428 assembly meetings, over 1,000 work sessions, and committee meetings. And... That's why you're tired. And whereas, as Nancy was singing along to Wham! on the way to work in 1984 in Washington, DC, President Reagan was creating Municipal Clerks Week. We think that may not be a coincidence. Whereas, just a few years later, in 1989, Nancy was first designated as Acting Borough Clerk, and through hard work and dedication to the mission of the municipal clerk in the Fairbanks North Star Borough, was appointed as Deputy Clerk in 1999 and Borough Clerk in 2013. And whereas, in 2013, Nancy was awarded the prestigious Master Municipal Clerk designation, a culmination of years of rigorous educational and professional work that only the most dedicated and accomplished of clerks achieve. And whereas, we would like to especially recognize Nancy's effort in implementing a vote-local community outreach campaign, which coincided with a substantial increase in voter turnout and awareness of local issues, and is a legacy. And whereas, building on the community outreach program, Nancy began hosting a candidate open house, bringing together interested citizens who sought to learn more information about running for local office. And whereas, the Borough Clerk has the distinction of also being the records management officer, and in that capacity, Nancy implemented a new borough-wide records retention schedule and records management program, Encompass, with half of borough departments going live with Encompass in May of this year. Yes, it's starting. Whereas, in 2013, Nancy implemented a robust succession plan, which included mentoring, training, and certifications to ensure her staff is prepared to seamlessly, we hope, continue to provide the high level of service we expect from our borough clerk's office. Whereas, service to others is a high calling, and Nancy's adherence to strict neutrality and impartiality while rendering service to the citizens and elected officials in this community was recognized and appreciated in the Fairbanks North Star Borough. Now therefore be it resolved by the Assembly of the Fairbanks North Star Borough that we thank Madam Clerk for her outstanding leadership and commitment to this community and send wishes of joy and happiness as she calls to order a new chapter of a new life. Now therefore be it further resolved...
Oh, there's more.
...that we respectfully request that you do not reply all to this message to avoid a possible Open Meetings Act violation. I think you might have a few words.
We hope. I'm going to try. It's so hard. Those who know me, I'm not a big public speaker. But thank you. The resolution's fantastic. It's beautiful. Thank you. I didn't read it. I didn't look at it before tonight. And when I was first hired in the Borough Clerk's office in 1984, I did not aspire to become a Borough Clerk. It was not the first thing for my mind. But as I came in and worked for this organization, what a fantastic organization it is to work for, I had the best mentors ever, Mona Lisa Drexler and Martha Harrell. And I've just... Public service grabbed me right away in my heart and said, "This is where you belong." I love public service. I love serving the public. I love being the liaison between the Assembly, the administration, the mayor, and previous mayors and previous assemblies having all their support over all the years. I just... I can't say enough for that. My employment here at the borough, I've gained some lifelong friends who are here right here tonight, and I'm so thankful that they are here. It's just been a wonderful career. I'm not done with public service. I'll find something else to do. I'll continue to hold elections. That's my passion. And they mentioned the open house candidate. We have a function for anyone interested in running for local office in May 16 at the City Council Chambers with the League of Women Voters, and then we will have the open house here. The next clerk will have the open house here on July 7. But I would like to recognize my family here tonight, just for a moment, if that's okay. I have my mom and dad here, Floyd and Sue Ashford. My husband Jeremy Bingham here with the camera. My dear friend, lifelong friend from grade school, Lori Henshaw. My son Tyler here and his girlfriend Ozon. And we've got Tammy Moses, Carolyn, Katrina, and Sandy. And thank you all so very much. And for you, the Assembly, and the school board, and all the city councils in Towns and North Pole, this is quite the commitment to run for local office. And one of the most important things about our office and being here is we've got a room full of citizens here who can come down here and testify and speak to their local elected officials about their views and concerns. Not everybody in the room's going to agree with everything that's said tonight, but we're all here as a community, and I love that. That is the process. And the school board has a lot of work ahead of them, but these elected officials give a lot of time to their community because they believe in their community, and that's all I have to say. Thank you so much. And I also need to thank my staff and my other departments that I could not go without if I didn't have my legal department... Or legal department. I call it mine. But I couldn't do it without Jill and her staff and Renee, the prior staff. And but this is the staff that I would like to mention. Thank you. Our team, we would not be here today... I'm one. I'm one in a team of all these ladies over here. Becky Shannon, Melanie, Jessica, and I lost Suzanne and Patty. They're here somewhere, Suzanne and Patty. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Nancy. Nancy, we probably want a picture of me handing you this resolution. But I also wanted to let everybody know that there's another celebration for Nancy. It's a little more casual. It's from 3 to 5 on May 31 in the clerk's office. So please join us and say goodbye and tell her how much we appreciated her. Well, thank you all for joining us and celebrating Nancy's time with us. The cupcakes in the back are for Nancy. We'll probably take a break around 7-ish and get a cupcake and wish her well. So with that, let us see where we are on the agenda. Can you hear me okay back there? Still could be louder? Okay. So that takes us to Communications to the Assembly, which is a memorandum from Catherine Dodge, Presiding Officer, recommending the appointment of April Tricky as Borough Clerk with an effective date of June 1, 2018. It's on page 5 of your folder. There's additional information that I think was just passed out, and I was going to request a report from Ms. Stuvak, our Human Resources Director, on this recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Dodge. Human Resources conducted a recruitment for the Borough Clerk position. There was a total of 12 applicants, Ms. Tricky being the only applicant that met all of the minimum qualifications. Ms. Dodge appointed a selection committee who subsequently interviewed Ms. Tricky. The committee consisted of Assembly Member Matt Cooper, Borough Attorney Jill Dolan, and myself. The selection committee recommended offering Ms. Tricky the Borough Clerk position. The Assembly is required to approve the appointment of a Borough Clerk as the clerk serves at the pleasure of the Assembly. The effective date of the appointment, as Ms. Dodge indicated, should be June 1 of 2018. Recently distributed is the applicant evaluation summary and Ms. Tricky's employment application. So those should have been in your yellow folder. And we just thank you for the consideration of this request to appoint Ms. Tricky, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about the recruitment if anyone has any.
Okay. Before we do that, Ms. Dolan, do you have anything you wish to add to the staff report?
No, I agree with the recommendation, and I think Ms. Stuvak covered the points.
Mr. Cooper?
Nothing added.
Thank you very much. With that, I'll ask for a motion to approve the appointment of April Tricky as the Borough Clerk effective June 1, 2018.
Move to approve.
Seconded. So it's been moved by Mr. Roberts and seconded by Mr. Tackey. That takes us to Assembly Discussion or Debate. Is there any discussion or debate? Seeing none? Yes, Mr. Lawrence?
Well, I certainly... I don't think I have to... I'm not concerned, but I urge my fellow Assembly members to vote yes on this motion. You know, I've seen April at work since she started as Deputy Clerk. I think it was in September 2013, and she's done an excellent job, and I have a lot of confidence that she'll be able to step in some pretty big shoes and do an effective job, so I intend to vote yes.
Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, Clerk? I think we're ready to vote.
Thank you. Mr. Tackey?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Quist?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
And Ms. Dodge?
Yes. Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none?
Seven zero.
Let the record reflect that Ms. Tricky is unanimously approved. Welcome, Ms. Tricky, and thank you for your service. It's a Borough Clerk night. Okay, that takes us to messages from the Borough Mayor. Mr. Mayor, have you messages?
Don't have too much to share tonight. Just I have been out of town. I was on the Alaska Municipal League's Selection Committee for a new executive director, so I was down in Anchorage working through that process, and I think AML will have a new executive director shortly. We're not quite ready for an announcement, probably tomorrow. But anyway, so with that, I guess that's it for this evening.
Okay, thank you. Questions with the mayor, Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, I wanted to ask the $4 million air quality grant that we just got, does that have the same restrictions as the $2 million? Is it more restricted? I saw something in the paper on it, but I wanted to see if you had a list of the differences.
We don't have it totally finalized yet, but it should. It is different. So to say more or less restrictive is hard to say one way or the other. It doesn't allow for stove-to-stove changeout, wood stove-to-wood stove changeout. It allows for a variety of stove, wood stove, to other sorts of cleaner devices. So it kind of complements what we have, because the existing $2 million from EPA is stove, wood stove-to-wood stove essentially, and doesn't allow for wood stove to other cleaner-type devices and/or generators. I mean, part of the big concern for folks with wood stoves is being able to have heat when the power goes out. And so we were using local money to do stoves, get rid of a stove and put in a generator so you have power and keep your whole house running. And the last EPA grant did not allow for that sort of thing and had very little flexibility. This new one, that is possible to do, so we have a broader spectrum of options, but we did lose one option in the wood stove-to-wood stove type changeout. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, to follow up, though. So is it just restricted to changeouts in those categories? I mean, it's not... There's not available money in it to maybe do different studies or tests, testing that we have talked about doing. Is it just for changeouts?
It's just for changeouts. Thank you.
Any other questions for the Borough Mayor? Seeing none? We'll move on to reports of special and standing committees, and I'll start with you, Mr. Tackey. Any reports?
I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Gray?
No report.
Mr. Lawrence?
No report.
Mr. Roberts?
The Land Management Advisory Commission meeting that was scheduled for March 9 had to be canceled for lack of a quorum, and they're talking right now about having it on the 30th, but I don't think that's been cemented yet.
Thank you. Mr. Quist, you look like you have a report.
Yeah, so the Air Pollution Control Commission, last month they're still in their quasi-judicial role. The May meeting, the... Has it yet been scheduled? There's no agenda out for it yet. Sustainability Commission had a special meeting... I mentioned this previously, but I'll just briefly revisit it. Sustainability Commission had a special meeting last week to discuss the proposed fees on e-waste recycling, at which they drafted a letter, which has now been sent to us. A representative from IA Green Star was there, gave a report, and has also since forwarded their thoughts on that as well to the Assembly.
Thank you.
And then also, today at noon, Assembly Capital Projects and Legislative Committee met for a brief informative session presentation from the administration regarding an upcoming bond package proposal. And there was one, like, new document, kind of breakdown from Public Works on that and on the proposed bonding, and I'll get that to the Assembly. The other information that was provided was similar to what we saw in Finance Committee. And that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cooper, do you have anything to report?
Do not have any reports. Thank you.
And I, too, have no reports. Mr. Gray?
I just want to apologize for glossing over the fact that I was at the same meeting as Mr. Quist at noon, but he gave a very good report, so I apologize for that.
Thank you. So that takes us to reports from our representatives, and we would start with the report from the City of Fairbanks representative, but we're kind of on an off week, and so we don't have a North Pole city representative or a Fairbanks city representative. But thank you, Mr. Rice. We have a school board representative. Do you have a report for us?
Thank you very much. I feel a little alone down here.
Come on, you do.
But one thing that I do want to say is the district is continuing to gather stakeholder input and community perspectives to improve school climate and discipline. The Safe and Supportive School Survey is still available on our website. The survey will close May 14, 2018. The schools are gearing up for their end of the year, and graduation's starting next week. We're starting off with the Star of the North on May 10 at 7 o'clock at... I better know where that is, because I'm going to that one. We're going to be at the hearing auditorium. Last night, we hosted our staff retirement and reception, recognizing all the staff that retired 2017, 2018. We honored 53 employees, and when we calculated all of the years that just left us, that was 1,055 years that left our school district last night or throughout the year. So that's a lot of knowledge and experience that just was with us for quite a while. So on Monday, May 7, the Fairbanks Pipeline Training Center will be hosting a celebration recognizing the recent accomplishments of the students that completed their introduction to the trades training. And that will be at 5:00 PM at the Fairbanks Pipeline Training Center. I've been to a couple of those. Actually, I was a graduate of one back in '99, so... And it's pretty fun. You know, a lot of those kids, they... You know, it's not just something that you go in and sit in a classroom at. A lot of it is also hands-on experience as well, too. So, you know, it's seeing more of the trades and what you have to do and, you know, getting the hands-on experience as well, too. One thing that I do encourage for anyone who has any children that are graduating, not just high school, you know, we have kindergartners that are graduating. If you have any nieces, nephews, loved ones that are graduating kindergarten, please go and watch them. You also have eighth graders that are, you know, going on into high school, you know, and they have a little reception for them as well, too. I encourage you guys, please, go there and acknowledge the accomplishments that these young kids have done.
But one thing that I do want to say is, the district is continuing to gather stakeholder input and community perspectives to improve school climate and discipline. The Safe and Supportive School Survey is still available on our website. The survey will close May 14th of 2018. The schools are gearing up for their end of the year and graduation starting next week. We're starting off with the Star of the North on May 10th at seven o'clock at... I better know where that is because I'm going to that one. We're going to be at the hearing auditorium. Last night, we hosted our staff retirement and reception, recognizing all the staff that retired 2017, 2018. We honored 53 employees. And when we calculated all of the years that just left us, that was 1,055 years that left our school district last night or throughout the year. So that's a lot of knowledge and experience that just was with us for quite a while, so. On Monday, May 7th, the Fairbanks Pipeline Training Center will be hosting a celebration, recognizing the recent accomplishments of the students that completed their introduction to the trades training. And that will be at 5:00 PM at the Fairbanks Pipeline Training Center. I've been to a couple of those. Actually, I was a graduate of one back in 99, so. And it's pretty fun. You know, a lot of those kids, they, you know, it's not just something that you go in and sit in a classroom at. A lot of it is also hands-on experience as well, too, so. You know, it's seeing more of the trades and what you have to do and, you know, getting the hands-on experience as well, too. One thing that I do encourage for anyone who has any children that are graduating, not just high school, you know, we have kindergartners that are graduating. If you have any nieces, nephews, loved ones that are graduating kindergarten, please go and watch them. You also have eighth graders that are, you know, going on into high school, you know, and they have a little reception for them as well, too. I encourage you guys, please, go there and acknowledge the accomplishments that these young kids have done. You know, it's a great experience for them, and they'll really appreciate it. And just our staff is just working hard to close out another school year. Right before I got here, I was given a piece of paper, and I'll turn it into the part that I just, it was given to me right when I walked in. I'm not going to be here for the budget part, so this is something from me. And it just dates back from 2014 up to now, about your guys' contribution. It's been fairly, you know, even. And I just encourage you guys, please, you know, I know you guys are going to be talking about it. You know, please, I hope you guys are consistent. I know all of us are in woes. You know, it's just, you know, I'm asking not only as a school board member, but as a person of this community as well, too. And on here, it has, it states, you know, minimum contribution and maximum allowable contribution and stuff like that. So I'll just hand this over. Last time I had something over. But that's all I have.
Okay, let's see if they have questions for you. Any questions for Mr. Rice? Yes, Mr. Cooper?
I guess one comment and one question. I appreciated the comments that are reported in the paper about funding and, and I know, I saw Ms. Lambert here earlier. I don't know if she's still here, but, you know, the approach that appears that the district is taking to handling layoff notices in light of the $48 million minimum funding resolution. It sounds like the district listened to some of the comments that came out of the last meeting, so I felt like that was a positive step forward. And my question is, I've heard from a couple of people that they're trying to register for AP classes that were available a month or so ago but are unable to do so now, and they fear that some of these AP classes have been cut, statistics and economics specifically. I don't know if you know the answer, but if you could find out.
I could get ahold of the curriculum department and have them contact you guys with that.
I'd be curious. I asked these people to contact the school administration as well, but...
Yeah, not a problem. And I'd love to be able to get that information to you. I just don't have it in front of me right now.
Sure, thank you.
And one thing, sorry, one last thing. I encourage you guys, you know, after we figure out what, you know, you guys are going to do and the state's going to do, you know, we're going to recommend what our final budget's going to be on the 21st and 22nd. So if you guys, you know, want to come down, and I encourage anyone here in the audience, you know, please come down and, you know, let us know what, you know, we're doing. You know, we heard from Scott Calder, who, you know, and so, you know, we don't take these things lightly. You know, we really listen to you, and I really enjoy and listen to you. You know, it's one of the reasons why I became a board member is because, you know, when I was younger, I didn't think anyone listened to us when I was a kid, you know. And so I wanted to turn around and try to make things differently. So, you know, I appreciate everyone's comments and I appreciate everyone's questions, you know. We're supposed to take the hard questions and hard comments, you know, and try to make this community better. So I appreciate everyone in the audience and everyone that's up here.
Thank you. I had a suggestion for you. A few years ago, I don't remember, Ms. Hutchinson started asking about people that were retiring because many times they're retiring out at a high rate of pay and being hired in at a lower rate. And we've found some significant abilities to manage our budget better, more accurately, by doing that. And I was curious if you, if you all did that or want to suggest you consider doing that in the future.
That's something that we can bring up, and, you know, I'll try to bring that up on the 21st, whenever we come back in for our budget meetings as well, you know.
It can be pretty significant with all the people that you've just had retire. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Rice? Seeing none? Thank you. I see that Mr. Skips has joined us from the City of North Pole. Welcome.
Thank you.
And do you have a report from the City of North Pole?
No, ma'am, I don't.
Okay. Well, let's see if we have questions from people from the City of North Pole. Seeing none, I bet you would tell us that you're planning for the Fourth of July parade and the memorial?
Yes, um, next week, there's a memorial, I believe it's, um... I can give you that date.
Okay, thank you. I don't remember it either. Okay, well, thank you for joining us. With that, we're going to move to special orders. And we'll start with liquor license transfer. Restaurant eating place, license 4344. It's on page seven of your packet. It's Chang Mai Restaurant LLC, doing business as Thai and Chinese Cuisine Number Three, 338 Old Stees Highway. It's transferring to Somnuk LLC, Bon Thai Restaurant, 541 Third Avenue. Mayor Castle, do you have a staff report?
We do. We'll go to Mr. Williams for that report.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Dodge, Borough Administration has reviewed the liquor license transfer sitting before you now. The property is zoned consistent with its intended use, and Borough Administration recommends no protest.
Thank you. So I'm going to open public hearing on liquor license transfer from Chang Mai Restaurant, doing business as Thai and Chinese Cuisine Three, to Somnuk LLC, doing business as Bon Thai Restaurant. I don't have anyone signed up to testify. Is anyone that wishes to testify? Seeing no one coming forward, I'm going to close public hearing. Look for motion.
Move to file no protest. Second.
So it's been moved by Mr. Gray and seconded by Mr. Tecky. Any discussion or debate on this liquor license transfer? Seeing none, clerk, I think we're ready to vote. Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tecky?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Quist?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge? Yes. Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none? Seven zero? It's adopted seven zero. And that takes us to liquor license new restaurant eating place, license 5640. It's on page 35 of your packet. It is Somnuk LLC, Bon Thai Express, 3677 College Road, Suite 9. And Mayor Castle, do you have a staff report?
We do. Back to Mr. Williams for that.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Dodge, Borough Administration has reviewed the new liquor license restaurant eating place application that's sitting before you. The property is zoned consistently with its intended use, and Borough Administration recommends no protest.
Okay, I'm going to open public hearing again, and this is on the new liquor license transfer from, I have the wrong one. Public hearing on liquor license new restaurant eating place, license 5640, to Somnuk LLC, doing business as Bon Thai Express. I again have no one signed up to speak. I see no one coming forward, so I'm going to close public hearing.
Move to approve the application. Second.
So it's been moved by Mr. Lawrence and seconded by Mr. Gray? Mr. Shrug one or shrug two? Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, clerk, this call's over. Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Quist?
Yes.
Mr. Tecky?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge? Yes. Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none? Seven zero? It's adopted seven zero. And with that, I think we're going to, I know, we're going to recess until seven, so we can celebrate, have a few cupcakes with Ms. Asher Bingham, and we will resume at seven on the budget ordinance. Okay?
Do you want to come back and move on that sequence?
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, everybody. We're going to call ourselves back to order here. And we're going to welcome the listening audience. We want to thank KUAC for putting us on the air tonight in normally a work session rather than a regular meeting. And we appreciate them broadcasting us, and we're waving at the broadcast audience. With that, we're going to open up, or we're going to go to ordinance number 2018-20, which is an ordinance appropriating funds as listed for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, ratifying fiscal policies and user fees and levying taxes. The sponsor is Mayor Castle. It's on page 59. There are Finance Committee recommendations on page 106. There is a proposed attachment ANC substitutes and additional information in yellow folders. And we'll start with a staff report from Mayor Castle and then Mayor Matt Cooper, our Finance Committee Chair. Mr. Mayor?
Well, thank you. And thanks to Mr. Cooper and the Finance Committee, which was comprised of virtually all of you folks, going through three days of meetings to get through 800 and some pages of budget. Thanks to our Finance Department for a ton of work in a short timeframe, stacked on top of some late audit work and other things, too, for getting this all put together for us in a timely fashion. A ton of work. This year's budget was a challenge. I think you're all aware. I think it is the 30th budget that I've been part of the production on, and I can say without a doubt it was by far the most challenging and the most stressful for me. It's been stressful for a lot of folks. It's been stressful for our staff. You see how dedicated a lot of the folks are that work here when we just did a little bit of retirement for a clerk who's obviously pretty dedicated. We have a lot of staff members like that. And when they don't get funding to accomplish their mission, they get frustrated and stressed. The public gets frustrated and stressed when we start cutting services of any sort, and I totally understand that. We have adjusted some services in this budget down in cutting a few different things. Every, I think virtually everything that we've trimmed, I've gotten comments on. The reality of it is, we relied on a business model, relying on the state of Alaska for funding. It isn't what it used to be. And we have too many structures to maintain that we've been deferring maintenance on. And we do not have the final financial resources to maintain everything in our system, all 217 buildings. It just isn't there. I wish it was. It isn't there. And so now the challenge is, where are we going to backtrack since we can't print money? And what facilities are we going to maintain and what facilities are we not? And the public is thankfully getting engaged in the discussion more now than previously. We've heard from a number of people from Mary Si, and I'm sure that we'll hear from them again this evening. But we've also been now hearing from a lot of people who are next on the list, so to speak, and realizing that their facility is in jeopardy because there isn't enough money to go around. And so I wish we had more resources. I wish the state was sending us the money they used to send us. I wish a lot of things, but the reality is we have to produce a budget that has hard numbers in it, and these are hard numbers and frustrating for me. I don't like going backwards in any capacity, and I'm trying to plot a positive course forward with the least amount of negative impact that we can have on our community as we move forward and try to maintain as many of the services as we've grown accustomed to as we possibly can. And I think that this budget that I presented annoys many, many people, both public and on our staff, and I'm sorry for that. But I have tried to be as balanced as possible with the resources that are available in tough financial times for a lot of people, both public and private. So that's the budget. I stand by it. And I'll defer to Mr. Cooper for the rest of the report.
Hey, Mr. Cooper?
Thank you. Building on the mayor's proposed budget, the Finance Committee spent three weekend days, as the mayor noted, going through the proposed budget, department by department, division by division, line by line. I think everybody on the dais was here, so you know what we talked about and what we did. I think that the committee appreciated the efforts that the mayor took to balance the budget. One thing that was a little bit different in the process this year is because the mayor had to say no to so many requests. Each of the departments had kind of a list of, if we could have, you know, one more thing, what would it be? And that added a bit of time to the budget process this year, but it was good to hear from the departments about the things that they felt that they really needed to do their jobs, and so we considered those as we went along. I think the one piece that we didn't have and still don't, are working on the numbers, is the costs associated with Mary Si and keeping it open. So I know we'll hear from folks on that tonight. And just so those, all of you know, you know, some of the members of the Assembly and the Finance Committee have asked for numbers in the administration on keeping it open, and as we get those numbers, I'm sure they'll be available to you, and we'll be talking about them next week when we talk more about that in the budget process. So in the end, we have the Finance Committee recommended budget that's before you, page 106, along with all of the adjustments. My thanks to the finance staff for always keeping up with us. I know Peggy's only a few seconds behind, so it's good to have the real-time numbers. And I guess I'll reserve a little bit of staff report time next week when we're talking about the budget.
Okay. You may have to remind me. So that takes us to public hearing. And because we have many people in the room, I'll give you just a little bit of, you've kind of seen the process. I have a list of people that have signed up. There's another list out there that's still getting names. We'll go through, and I'll call people as they've signed up. I'll ask you to come down. I'll keep the second seat filled. It just kind of helps us move through the night more quickly. You'll be given three minutes to make your statement. The Assembly's role is to ask questions of what, of statements that you've made, information that they're interested in that you may have. We ask, we all endeavor to be as respectful as possible, so if we agree or disagree, we just kind of keep that to ourselves, maybe whisper to our neighbor. But we do our best to just listen respectfully to everybody as they speak. And that goes for everybody in the room. So that's a high-level overview. I can give more details if we need, but I think we're all good to go here. So first up, something called a public hearing to order. And on, this is on ordinance 2018-20, an ordinance appropriating funds as listed for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, ratifying fiscal policies and user fees and levying taxes. The sponsor is Mayor Castle. And I have first, signed up Diane Darnall, and second, I have Kathy Drygas. If you'd both please come forward and take a seat. Welcome. And Ms. Darnall, if you would please, it's Darnall, isn't it? Thank you.
My name is Diane Darnall. I live in the Aurora subdivision.
We need to start your last name.
Darnall, thank you. D-A-R-N-A-L-L.
Thank you.
And I've been a resident of the borough for over 43 years. And most of you don't even know who I am because I have been here less than a number of fingers on my hand. I feel this is really important tonight, so that's why I've come. People ask me, "Why do you live in Fairbanks?" Because I, over 43 years, I can live about anywhere I want to go. And I say it's because it's the people. It's the people are extraordinary here. I mean, the energy, you talked about Nancy, the energy she puts off and shares with our community. It's the energy that keeps me here. And that's one of the reasons I want to speak to you about getting an amendment and put in Mary Si's funding. Because that's what makes Mary Si special, is the energy that that creates for our community. Now, that doesn't sense, it doesn't make any sense to probably keep that building open. Would you look further away? Is that better? Just good? Okay. Wasn't sure.
Yeah, I understand.
Thank you. So anyway, you know, but it makes sense from the standpoint that this gives, this is an energy creator for our borough that generates hope. That's what it generates. And Alaskans have a creative energy when we all work together on a problem that gives us hope, that we can do anything we want to do when we all work together as a community. So I encourage people to come out with some creative thinking. I don't have the magic number. I like to come up here. The mayor would love me to come up here and say, "Do XYZ," and then we can fund everything. I looked at the budget. I was surprised. I looked at the yellow thing. I'm not very familiar with all these forms. But, you know, I looked at the total budget on the yellow form, and it's like $185 million, the bottom budget, looks like, total appropriations, which is $800,000 more than the budget was on the white pages. And that sounds like about enough to keep Mary Si open. But then I hear, "Well, no, Mary Si's not in this funding budget." So I'm not sure. Maybe there's just a misunderstanding. Maybe that $800,000 is for Mary Si. So maybe could look at that and get an amendment necessary. I encourage you all to look at what that Mary Si does for our community. It's just not a building square building and dollars per square foot. It's much more than that to the community because that radiates into our Alaska spirit and white people live here and white people will come here and white visitors like to interact with Fairbanksans. So thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Darnall. Let's see if there are questions for you. Oops, I had the mic down for you. Let's see if there are questions for you. Seeing none, thank you, and thank you for service on the Senior Olympics. I have next Tara Gildner. Okay, if you hand it to us, we'll pass the clerks, we'll pass it out. Is Tara Gildner here? Thank you. Ms. Drygas, please give us your name and spell your last name and tell us your neighborhood.
My name is Kathy Drygas, D-R-Y-G-A-S. I live at Five Mile, Chena Hot Springs Road, on Rifle Road. I've lived in the community. I first came to Fairbanks in 1970. I've lived here since 1971. My husband is Mark. My daughter's Heidi. I have a son, Eric. I have a daughter, Holly. They're all grown now. I have five grandchildren. But I am in support of Mary Si, and the reason I am, I realize that we need a new facility. I get that. But it doesn't make sense to me to tear down the existing building. What are we supposed to do? I mean, it's very difficult for a senior person that's handicapped to park and go into, you know, into like, say, the hammy pool or even to go out to North Pole. The pools are extremely cold. And, you know, we really, it is a community. It's a sense of, you know, it's something, I do aquasizer. My husband swims lap. My grandchildren take swimming lessons there. You know, I've been here a long time. I've never even come to, I don't even think I've been to one of these meetings. But I feel pretty strong about this, and that's why, you know, a lot of people here know who I am. They know my family, you know. I feel like if I came and supported this, it might go somewhere, you know. I'm just feeling like, you know, I almost feel like the seniors are kind of expendable. It's like, okay, let's fund everybody else and forget the seniors, you know. The seniors are making up a bigger part of our community now than ever before. All the baby boomers, that's me. That's my husband. That's my friends back here. I know a lot of these people, and, you know, we're all seniors, and we depend on that. It means a lot to us. And so I just wanted to let the community know that, you know, you know, I'm not a great public speaker, but I support keeping it open as long as you can, you know. If you're going to build something else, at least get the funding first. Don't close the facility you have, you know. Otherwise, you kind of are saying, "Well, you know, too bad for you guys. Too bad for all you that use Mary Si." You know, I just don't think it's right. And that's what I came to say, and I said it.
Thank you. Before you leave, let's see if there are questions for you. I don't see any. Thank you so much for coming down and for your service to the community.
Thank you. You're welcome.
I have next Frank Turney. So Ms. Gildner, if you'd please give us your name, spell your last name, and tell us your neighborhood, please.
My name's Tara Gildner, last name G-U-I-L-D-N-E-R.
Thank you.
And I live in North Pole, off of Badger. And I am here to address what I've heard is called the cleanup fund and my problems with the broad interpretation or the broad words used that leave too many things open to be abused. And I wanted to point out a few things. And also, I've also heard that it bypasses some of the, for lack of better terms, due process of bringing the junkyard to the attention of the Assembly members before taking the owner of the property to court. I have, since I was a little girl, I've always thought of the junkyard owners as, I know it's weird to say, but the unsung heroes for, of Fairbanks and North Pole because of personal experiences. When I was a child, my family's house burned down, and local communities came together, especially churches, offering free things for us. But the biggest help we got wasn't from a middle-class or a rich person with a clean-cut yard. It was a junkyard owner who offered us a free place to stay for a family of four kids and, of course, the two parents. And he didn't give us any terms or any amount of time that he said, "Oh, you can use the property for this amount of time, and then I have to kick you out." He was very nice to us, and he let us, we started two different businesses in the few years that we stayed there. And it allowed us to get out of economic hardship through someone as nice as this junkyard owner to help us out. And I also wanted to point out, a couple of years ago, I had read on an index for economic freedom, and it tracks the world's economic freedoms and their economic problems and where their finances are at. And it, they showed a correlation between private property rights and their economic status. So they found out that most countries who abused private property rights and didn't allow people to own private property and they regulated their private property to have more economic debt and more economic poverty in general. And I believe this is a big issue because private property rights are part of our freedoms and violating that without compensation, especially when we have junkyard owners giving people parts for vehicles that they otherwise might not be able to afford elsewhere and help with old equipment that you would think is outdated and doesn't work, but amazingly does and helps with home building projects.
Thank you, Ms. Gildner. Let's see if there are questions for you. Mr. Lawrence has a question for you.
Ms. Gildner, what about the property rights of the neighbor who doesn't want to have to work at the junk?
As far as property, devalue?
Yeah. Well, and just devaluing, devaluing the value of the property, but also the enjoyment of the property.
Well, if you don't respect somebody's private property rights, then how could they respect your rights for the value of your property?
Well, that's my point. I mean, it kind of goes both ways, doesn't it?
It does, yes. Okay. You know, I believe that, you know, I know that sometimes things can be unsightly, and I don't personally recommend that people have junkyards, but they are a great help to our economy, and they keep people off the streets sometimes. And you can't replace honest, valuable people who are willing to help.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gildner. Now, Mr. Roberts has a question for you.
Yeah, do you have any idea on the borough's definitions of junkyards, how they define that?
No.
And do you know that it's only about 1,000 square foot of stuff on your property that would qualify you to be a junkyard?
That is amazingly small.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you for coming down. We appreciate it. In our empty seat, we have Betsy Bonnell. Mr. Turney, welcome. Please give us your name, spell your last name, and give us your neighborhood.
329 Seventh Avenue, Sixth Avenue, and TUR anyway. I'll make it simple, without any jargon. Mayor and Borough Assembly, first of all, when it comes to cost and numbers from the government, I couldn't tell whether the numbers are inflated or puffed up just to give a reason to bulldoze Mary Si's. I was offended and many other citizens were offended. I believe the mayor is ongoing in high gear. When you made those comments, off-the-wall comments, that the people could get killed in the building, this was nothing but fear and intimidation against our citizens. That's why I do not trust the borough government during this sesame study. I would rather see somebody independent, independent from the borough government altogether to do that evaluation. Will the voters vote for your bond issue, $75 million or more, to have on their backs? I don't think so. But maybe we could have a bond issue for Mary Si's. That might be another option. I believe that they would probably go for that regarding it's the only real facility that handles a mentally and physically handicapped challenge.[1461.04] All the devices are there. I'd rather see that as an option than have the mayor's big swimming castle with a sea put aside and drowned. In the meantime, I would hope that the Borough Assembly can save Mary Si's tonight and appropriate some money for the maintenance and keep that building going. If not, we can get a reprieve tonight and come up with other options that have been on the table. We discussed nonprofits and other situations, so I would hope that, I don't know, I heard somebody mention about an amendment, maybe that's what's been needed to keep the facility open. Anyway, I've got a minute and 40 seconds. I had an opportunity, I had an opportunity to meet Mary Si in about 1983 and '84 through my mother and father, who spent 12 years at the facility before she, before they passed away. I tell you, I keep saying she had fire in her belly. I used to tell her that all the time because she just kept going, wouldn't stop. And I remember the days in the 1980s when she came down here at the Borough Assembly and pleaded with the Borough Assembly to keep that facility open. So I believe that there's a lot of seniors in here that also have fire in their belly. Anyway, thank you, and I hope you use some common sense and keep it open.
Thank you, Mr. Turney. Let's see if there are questions for you.
Oh, I doubt it.
Well, I have one. Actually, it's of the mayor. Mayor, are the evaluations that are being conducted of Mary Si being done by an outside evaluator?
They have. We've done internal investigations that led us to bring in a third party to evaluate the building. And we, per your request, are going out for more third-party investigations on the building. And the analysis that we've had from third-party folks suggests there's structural issues there, which is not our decision. So we're doing exactly what you asked, Mr. Turney, I guess is the point to all of this. We've already done that.
I would like to comment, Mr. Bettisworth came up here on Mary's first evaluation, he said the building wasn't under stress and all of a sudden, all of a sudden he flip-flopped and said, "It's not worth fixing the building." It makes me wonder, him being an architect, maybe he's hoping to bid on that new $75 million sea with a castle.
Let's be respectful, Mr. Turney.
Well, I have been, I think I've been doing pretty damn good.
You have been, thank you. Okay, I have Arlene Slocom for our empty seat. Ms. Bonnell, is it, or Bonnell?
My name is Betsy Bonnell, B-O-N-N-E-L-L. I live in Hamilton Acres.
Thank you.
I would like to comment on ordinance 2018-20 as it relates to closure of Mary Si Recreation Center. When I first heard of possible closure of Mary Si, I sent a message regarding my youth to the Assembly and I want to thank Mr. Quist for his prompt response. He said it's not, the deal, it's not a done deal yet. Thank you. That is not a done deal. As a retired federal employee, I understand the impacts politics can make on an operating budget. Not all the proposed budgets can be funded. I think everyone in this room understands that. I regret that I was unable to fully study the budget before coming to this meeting. However, 30 days is not sufficient notice to digest an over 800-page document, so I can't talk to the budget directly. However, I can tell you that closing Mary Si does not match with Parks and Rec's mission, which is to preserve and create an inclusive community culture by providing places and programs designated to enrich the quality of life. The users of Mary Si Recreation Facility are a community. We know each other by name, including the staff. We look forward to visiting each other, sharing stories of bumps and bruises, arts and crafts, joys and concerns. Therefore, when you close this facility, where are we gonna meet? At a local bar? A cannabis store? Maybe the drugs counter? The pharmacy counter where we pick up our prescriptions because we're gonna need more drugs if we can't get our physical exercise? In the budget, it says swimming lessons are at 90% capacity with the facilities we have now. Swim use has increased over last year. How is closing this facility meeting these needs and the borough's mission? There is no other facility in the borough where the less agile of us, young and old, can go without getting jostled by enthusiastic youngsters. There is no other place with a jacuzzi to relieve the muscle spasms brought on by pinched nerves and aches of arthritis. A study done by highly qualified, hard-working employees of Bettisworth North recommended repairing the facility, not tearing it down. Although that recommendation came with a significant price tag, the cost was spread out over several years, a cost that can easily be factored into Maintenance Reserve account. The chance of funding for a new facility in the current income is slim to none. I ask you honor the contracted work done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see if there are questions for you, Ms. Bonnell. Mr. Mayor has a question for you.
Were you here at the end of the meeting the other night when Mr. Bettisworth commented on the report that he had put together?
I was not. This is the first Assembly meeting I have attended. And if he wants to diss his employees, that's his business.
I would say there are any other questions?
Well, he didn't disrespect his employees at all. He's the one who headed up the project for Bettisworth North.
I don't believe that's accurate. We don't recall that he headed it up. In fact, he said he wasn't involved in it, I believe.
Mr. Bettisworth is not involved.
But we're in the middle of citizens' comments, so we'll set that one aside. Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Bonnell? Unless anyone has a direct answer to that question, technical answer. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bonnell. And Arlene Maria Berger? Do you, she can sit next to you or do you need the whole kind of?
Yes, that's fine, that's fine.
I couldn't remember if you needed the whole thing. Welcome. Hi, so we need your name and ask you to spell your last name and your neighborhood.
Arlene Slocom, S-L-O-C-U-M, and I live in Pearl Creek.
Thank you.
I have another song, new song. Thank you for letting me comment by singing a song. The song I call "Tear It Down," I have copies if you want.
Thank you. Do you want to share with the audience?
This is not a happy song. I hope the Assembly can work with the public to address the concerns that are outlined in the song and find solutions for the fate of aging structures in our community. A child stands on the land of dreams of adventure, river bound. The paint is peeling, timber's rotting. This old gold, let's tear it down. My mom and dad, they built the dipper, hauled it piece by piece right into town. But the borough says it's not safe there, so they're gonna tear it down. Tear it down, tear it down, tear it down, tear it down. Ain't no use for this old building, so I'm gonna tear it down. There was a flood, messed up the building. Roof is leaking, water dripping down. Our social hall for our community, we don't need it, so tear it down. The pool is old, pipes are leaking, and who knows what else is wrong? Better not take no chances, give the weak nerves, just tear it down. Tear it down, tear it down, tear it down, tear it down. Ain't no use for this old building, so I'm gonna tear it down. There are ghosts of old miners haunting halls of old pioneer town. And the gold has all been used, there's no money, so tear it down. I live in Fairbanks, pay my taxes to keep these buildings safe and sound. That money's gone, where did it go to? It's been ray-procussed, so tear it down. Guess I'm gonna tear it down.
Thank you very much, Ms. Slocom. Questions? Thank you very much. We'll see if there are questions for you. Good point. I don't see any. We appreciate you.
Okay, well, I hope, I hope I can tear this song up. That's my final comment and that we all work together and find positive solutions for these aging buildings that are such an important part of Fairbanks. Thank you very much for giving me the time.
Thank you, Ms. Slocom. So in our empty seat, we have Mr. Robert Shields. Ms. Berger, if you'll give us your name and spell your last name and tell us your neighborhood, please.
Yes, Maria Berger, B-E-R-G-E-R, and I'm in Goldstream Valley. I'd like to thank the Assembly members who are working toward keeping Mary Si Recreation Center open and functional. My testimony tonight is in support of the amendment to reinstate operating funds for Mary Si Recreation Center. During the Borough Assembly meeting of April 19th, it was pointed out by many that the Bettisworth Report conclusively recommends maintenance and repairs, not demolishing, as the most cost-effective choice for this facility. This option also makes practical sense for those who wish to be fiscally responsible, given the current financial climate. Further, it seems odd that an occupied operational building has been so suddenly slated for demolition when there has been no conclusive evidence that a dangerous situation exists and when the survey report does not indicate catastrophic structural problems. Previous public testimony has shown that the Mary Si Recreation Center is a unique facility fulfilling needs not available elsewhere to a broad cross-section of our community. Among these are safe and comfortable access to exercise and swim programs for seniors and for those with physical disabilities, as well as warmer waters that allow the youngest in our community to enjoy their swim lessons and gain skills that may save their lives. Working people attend lap swims at times of day when these are not available at other pools. Given that these programs cannot be duplicated elsewhere, it is important that the facility remain open and fully operational indefinitely, or at least until a suitable replacement is opened. If we rip down functional historical buildings, what will be left in this town? Box stores and bars? We have a substantial tourist industry and should want to promote our golden heart. The mayor himself stated in his letter submitting this year's budget to Catherine Dodge on July 1st, 2017, that the administration's vision is of building a vibrant community alive with opportunity and respect. On the same page, he states that his focus is on maintaining quality public services. Here is an opportunity to respect especially our elders for whom these quality programs such as Mary Si offers is vital. We all have aging parents and will become seniors ourselves one day. There is a monetary cost in belonging to a community and the return on this is the quality of life that we all hope to experience throughout our years. And that's the end of my main testimony. I have a couple of comments. I would suggest that if indeed we are going to ignore the final recommendations of architectural and engineering firms that taxpayers have paid for to do these surveys of these six public buildings, then perhaps we should stop wasting taxpayer dollars and having them done. And I think another comment that I have is, notwithstanding the factual information from the engineering report, the most damning evidence against Mary Si Pool on April 19th came from someone who by his own account was minimally informed on the subject. The retired founder of Bettisworth North Architects stated that he had only glanced at the report that day, that's a quote from his comments, and offered no additional facts other than his name being affiliated with the company from which he is now retired. He was quoted as saying, "As the mayor pointed out, there's a whole bunch of stuff, stuff that needs, says this needs to be studied more." There was no factual information contributed that added to the report, nor was he well-informed about the report. And that's all my testimony for today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Berger. Let's see if there are questions for you. I don't see any. Thank you for coming down, we appreciate it. I have Jim Gibbertoni next. Mr. Shields, please give us your name, spell your last name, and tell us your neighborhood.
Yes, good evening. My name is Robert Shields, S-H-I-E-L-D-S. I live in the Graff subdivision. And, you know, I was asked to speak to you guys tonight by the friends of Mary Si because we've been getting together and talking about possible solutions. And it's hard to follow up with a song and dance act. I wish I'd have brought some magic tricks or an exotic animal, but I do believe that I have brought some solutions and hopefully it can spread some hope around tonight. So I don't envy the job that you have to do. The challenges with Mary Si and the general state of the borough is not something that just happened. You've inherited a laundry list of challenges and it's going to require courage and some tough choices, but that's not all bad. In fact, I believe the socio-economic, environmental, and political state of emergency that we are in now is one of the greatest opportunities we have to make change. One of the things I love about Fairbanks is the local government is by the people, of the people, and for the people. For the last several decades, the idea of "for the people," however, has become lost as large corporations, special interest groups have influenced policy so that when they do harm people, the laws their lobbyists wrote let them off with a slap on the wrist. This type of activity has caused people to distrust the government. Beyond the money issues, the safety issues, and the maintenance issues, there's a huge trust issue regarding Mary Si. Is the information the borough's putting out accurate? Is it presented with a predetermined agenda? Is the Assembly just kicking the can down the road of taking financial responsibility of taking care of our citizens by taking care of the facilities that are critical to their daily lives? I am sad to see people protesting, rallying, and organizing again to try to stop, to try to step up where they feel the government has failed. In these difficult times, we need to come together and seek solutions, but here we are and I feel their pain. For near the last decade, I have consulted, volunteered, and testified on the abundant solutions to the cost of energy, clean air, food security, zero-waste strategies, and economic development opportunities for the community. And whether it's the borough, the school board, GVA, CCHR, or any of the other agencies in this state, the answer is always the same. These are great ideas, let's study them some more. While we study, nothing happens and people suffer. It is unnecessary, it is wasteful, and if it was another country, we would be at war. As it were, we are peacefully organizing to find solutions on our own. Sadly, it feels like we have to drag the borough, have the government kicking and forward, or kicking and screaming to step forward. Solar energy is a low-hanging fruit to find more money for the borough budget. It is a way to frame the energy conversation that promotes economic solutions and lasting plan for clean air. For the last eight years, the nonprofit I founded, Alliance for Reason and Knowledge, has led this community forward with presentations, conferences, and eight years of the annual Fairbanks Solar Tour. On Saturday, May 19th, at the Noel Ween Library, our co-host and in the auditorium, a presentation on community solar solutions. These are the, we've been passing these out, you still have a copy of them. Free money is falling from the sky and there's a plethora of no-cost financing options that are specifically designed for nonprofits, churches, and government agencies like this. It is long past the time this community caught up with the rest of the world. Solar provides options to leap forward and create an enduring legacy. I hope you can join us.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. Let's see if there are questions for you. Seeing none, thank you and thank you for the invitation and your work in the community. I have Jimmy Baldwin in our next, in our empty seat. Mr. Baldwin? I'm sorry, Ms. Baldwin, my apologies. Mr. Gibbertoni, your name and please spell your last name and give us your neighborhood.
My name is Gibbertoni, G-I-B-E-R-T-O-N-I. First name is Jim. I live in Hamilton Acres and I do use, I do use Mary Si quite a bit. And I'm a retired business owner of Fairbanks for 35 years, plumbed by trades. I let my accident. Anyhow, some of the people that came before me kind of stole my thunder, but that's fine, it needed to be said and they probably said it better than I did. Statistics and spreadsheets, I'm used to being a contractor and frankly, you can make them say anything. So I'm not going to delve into that. You know, I was at a luncheon just last week and I was kind of embarrassed because during that luncheon, there must have been 50 people there and somebody made a joke to me about Mary Si. And they said, "You know, Mary Si is going to the dogs." I said, "What are you talking about?" And he says, "She had to get a $17 million dog kennel. The borough's gonna build a dog shelter for $17 million and that's where your money's going." And I didn't laugh, I thought that was cruel, but I hope it's not the truth. And, you know, I think after listening to some of these people tonight, you know, there's a dog whistle that you can, to train a dog and you can't hear that whistle. It's a sound that average humans can hear. I think there's a sound coming out of Mary Si right now that some of you are hearing, but some are not hearing at all. And that's sad in itself. And like I said earlier, a woman talked, it was, it was great what she said. It isn't just about the money. But I can't believe, we cannot find out of the budget some extra money to resolve this for at least another year and work on it more. Maybe a working team between the public and you people over the next year. Using the elderly for sacrificial lambs is like Captain Hook said, not good form. And I'm really upset about this, I really am. And I look at the numbers and I shake my head and I think we're making a mistake here. I don't think the numbers are real, realistic. I don't. But I'm not going to get into saying they're embellished or not. Third-party is what I was going to dwell on tonight and it's already been brought up and answered. So I won't go into that. You know what, I'm gonna get done early. Last guy wasn't, but that's cool. He could have 20 minutes, 20 seconds of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbertoni, we appreciate that. Let's see if there are questions for you before you run off. Seeing none, but thank you, we appreciate you coming down and ending early. I have next, Micky Kasser and Ms. Baldwin, please give us your name, spell your last name, and tell us your neighborhood. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Jimmy Baldwin, B-A-L-D-W-I-N. I live on Roosevelt Street. I've been here since first grade, late 70s. And our community is a wonderful community. It wasn't easy getting it to where it is today and it won't be easy keeping it operational and in good repair. I'm not against a new recreation center, but I think that if we're going to work towards that, we should have a group of users of our current recreation facilities working on what this new facility should include or not include, a task force or some type of group working towards what that vision should look like, not just an idea in somebody's head, while keeping our current facilities open and operational. The Fairbanks North Star Borough website says under Parks and Rec, residents, under the title of residents, that we have pools with plenty of water. You know, if you close the Mary Si down, you're gonna have to change that. Just looking around on the internet and what Parks and Rec does for our community, quoting Christine Thrower, she's the director of West Palm Beach Parks and Rec, she says that Parks and Recreation Centers provide improved health, improved quality of life, it increases property value, attracts tourists, improves air and water, and brings the community together. Fairbanks is a great place to live and I appreciate all the work that you all do towards keeping our Parks and Rec facilities open.
Thank you, Ms. Baldwin. Let's see if there are questions for you. I don't see any, so thank you, we appreciate you coming down.
Thank you.
I have Victor Siya in the empty seat. And Ms. Kasser, welcome, your name and address, please spell your last name, I'm sorry, and the neighborhood.
Okay, Micky Rosser, it's R-O-S-S-E-R. I live on Denali Way, which is in the downtown area. I sort of follow after Jim. Sort of stole my thunder too. A lot has been said that I was going to say. However, I did attend last week's Assembly meeting and knowing that there was nothing really pertaining to Mary Si on that agenda, but I chose to come to the meeting anyway. And I'm glad I did. There was the debate between the school district and the borough. I have to say, when I left the meeting, I was a little disheartened. And this disheartening came, I guess, from listening to the debate and while I was listening to the debate, I kept thinking, "There's something not quite right here. There's, this isn't right." And so then when I was listening to the debate, it seemed it got a little testy and that came from, I think the mayor spoke about the school board not being transparent and there was numbers and figures that he didn't maybe know where they were coming from. So some of the frustration that Mary Si, friends of Mary Si feel, the frustration that I felt from both sides last week, and our frustration too, seems to be that some of this isn't adding up. I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but the Bettisworth Report, you've heard that, that, you know, the numbers aren't matching up from what some of the numbers we heard the mayor throw out. And I, and I think it was mentioned at the end of that meeting, there's something about this process, it just seems to me backwards. It seems like there should be more time, more open forums to discuss what we're now doing right now at the last minute. So I hope, you've got a lot on your plates and I thank you for all your time and energy you're putting into this and I know you know how I feel about Mary Si. So you say you'd like to end, you like humor? Well, I've got one for you. A lot of, you know, we're questioning the Bettisworth Report, so now we're gonna have this other structural or seismic report and I'm sure that will be public information. But who's to say that then we don't come back and, you know, like, Mr. Bettisworth came back and said, "Well, you know, that report," you know, he comes back and almost says that report, he does, "That report wasn't accurate." So what I want to say, propose to you when you've asked us if we don't, about being nonprofit, have we considered that? We're doing a lot, you know, we're trying to check a lot of avenues. How about that we, you let us have someone come and be present when you do this next structural report? Is that, is that maybe a possibility? Because if we would be a nonprofit, we'd like to have that information also. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rosser. Mr. Roberts has a question for you.
So, you know, that in regards to the Bettisworth Report, we got told about it, we also had to request it to get sent to us and it was. And we didn't really have a presentation on it. We had more of a presentation on the entire concept of the buildings and the borough and structures. And so, so just wanted to make sure you knew that we may not get a presentation, a full presentation when it comes out, we'll get told the numbers and I'm sure we'll get a copy of the report because we've requested it. But there may not necessarily be a public presentation of all of it, but it would be at an Assembly meeting and in this forum.
So we would get the information of that report?
It'd definitely be public information, you could get them.
Okay, I just thought I would throw it out there.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I don't see any other questions, so thank you and thank you for your ideas and suggestions and passion. So Ronnie Rosenberg, I have you in the empty seat. Mr. Siya, welcome back. Mr. Siah, welcome back.
Thank you.
Please give us your name, spell your last name, you'll have, tell us your neighborhood. You'll have three minutes.
Victor Siah, S-I-A-H. I live in the Rickert subdivision. Historic preservation is beneficial to the community in the following ways. Culturally, a community is richer for having the tangible presence of past eras. Economically, a community benefits from increased property values and tax revenues when historic buildings are protected, maintained, and used. Developmentally, a community ultimately benefits from having a concerted and well-defined planning approach for the protection of historic buildings while accommodating healthy growth. Socially, a community benefits when citizens take pride in the history and are mutually concerned, excuse me, for the protection of the historic properties. Environmentally, a community benefits when historic buildings are recycled, restored, rehabilitated, rather than demolished and disposed of in the community landfills. It provides an economic development opportunity in tourism and construction-related jobs for repair and rehabilitation. Overall, historic preservation adds to the quality of life, making for a more livable community. The historic preservation plan identifies the need for recording and preserving the history of communities within the borough, and suggests a need for public involvement in the decision. I'm going to repeat that, and a suggestion, a need for public involvement in the decision, making when development and other pressures threaten historic resources. Too many of the old buildings and structures in Fairbanks and North Pole have fallen to the bulldozer to make room for new construction. Our job today is to preserve the viable historical properties that remain. I cannot take credit for any of the words I just said. Every word that I spoke belonged to the Fairbanks North Starborough Department of Community Planning, adopted July 13th, 2006, ordinance number 2006-42, revised February 22nd, 2007, ordinance number 2007-11. What I've witnessed in the recent past with the mayor's proposal does not reflect what the borough has said they would do. To the contrary, it is my belief that what we have witnessed has been recklessness and irresponsibility. You've already taken money out of the budget, excuse me, out of the operating budget for next year, postponed an unknown amount of repairs, commissioned a report for demolition, disregarded those findings, commissioned a seismic study in order to support your suspicions of structural failure. Wow. I wonder what could have been accomplished at that time, and those resources had been used towards a plan of preservation. I also wonder what actions, if any, have been taken or ideas entertained to support the Mary Siya Rec Center. I know my time's up, and I'm going to leave you with one last quote. This quote is not mine either. My point is, regardless of the vote, up or down on the bond, the building still needs to come down ASAP. I think everybody recognizes that quote.
Thank you very much. Let's see if there are questions for you. I don't see any. Thank you for coming down. We appreciate it. I have Christine Robbins in the empty seat. Welcome, Ms. Rosenberg. If you would give us your name, spell your last name, tell us your neighborhood.
Yeah, Ronnie Rosenberg, R-O-S-E-N-B-E-R-G, and I live in Two Rivers, and I am here to testify in favor of the budget as it is put forth in terms of what is funding animal control, which is the department that I know most intimately. Actually, I would like to see it increased, but we really cannot preserve the level of services if it were to be decreased in any way for a variety of reasons. First of all, the public has come to expect a certain level of service. Historically, we have provided that level of service. The Fairbanks Animal Shelter Fund was formed in 2002 to supplement and augment our, we're just now doing our nonprofit filing, which is due on May 15th. For our last fiscal year, we are down over $30,000, and we, more like 37. And we've done an analysis of where that is, because Picknick Give went up, donations through our fundraisers went up. One thing, of course, is no one died, so that was a good thing. We did not get a large bequest, you know, which is something that happens in the nonprofit world. But some of the changes that have happened at animal control recently, after the theft at the library with the Library Foundation, and the separation between the nonprofit group and operations, staff is not taking money over the counter, the euthanasia policy that has changed, before people would come in to have an animal euthanized, and the form would say, there is no fee for this, but a donation to the Animal Shelter Fund is appreciated, and staff would process that and leave it for me, and I pick it up six days a week. I've never suspected that staff took any of it. But anyway, now unless somebody affirmatively goes out of their way to make a donation, we've looked at what can be done to expedite that. Shrinkage at the university is another factor. You know, there are a number of factors, but the bottom line is that before, where we were able to add money for travel or to fix a fence, that's not going to be happening in the next fiscal year again, unless we have an unexpected windfall. So for all these reasons, to maintain services, I would urge that you fully fund this package and increase it if you possibly can, especially with veterinary services.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Rosenberg. Let's see if there are questions for you. I don't see any. Thank you for your service.
Okay, thank you.
All the dogs and cats say thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Rabbits and birds, too. Let's see, I have Cindy Potter in the empty seat. Ms. Potter, thank you. Welcome, Ms. Robbins. Please give us your name, spell your last name, and tell us your neighborhood.
Christine Robbins, R-O-B-B-I-N-S, herdic term. So I say, thank you for your time. I'm here before you today in protest of the creation of a code enforcement cleanup fund. In my understanding, this would bypass bringing an ordinance before the assembly if they were going to choose relegation against a citizen, and now the assembly would just be notified after the fact. Not only is this unfair to the citizens, but unjust to them and the assembly. I would also ask if you could look at redefining what is junk. As it is now, there's no differentiation between piles of trash bags full of paper towels and expensive scrap metal. Logic, common sense should tell you that these two don't belong together, so I hope you fix that at some point, preferably before you pass the creation of this fund. I'd like to tell you the story of Johnny Rogers. He used to live over here off driveway. His yard was an eyesore, as over his long life, he was an avid collector of whatever he wanted. He was issued a warning by the city to clean up, or they would do it for him and take him to court. As an old man with no money and poor health, there wasn't much he could do. In fact, he wasn't even aware of the warning letter, as it was posted somewhere outside his house, and it was brought to his attention by a concerned acquaintance. This concerned individual brought together a group of volunteers and helped him clean up his yard enough to save his house before the deadline given. He and his wife were so appreciative that they were brought to tears. I know because I was there. I was helping clean up his house for him. So I'm using him as an example of what this body, this borough, could do for their community. Instead of acting as the enemy of so many so-called junkyards, you could instead relegate some funds to help them with no strings attached. You know, that would require a golden heart. I believe it's in each of you to be able to do that, and that's really all I have to say, but I just hope you reconsider going about cleaning up junkyards this way. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robbins. Let's see if there are questions. Mr. Roberts has a question for you.
So you've read the code definition of junkyards and what the borough considers a junkyard?
Yes.
And do you consider that to be pretty broad, in other words, covering a larger amount of properties than you might think of as a junkyard?
Absolutely, and they really need to redefine exactly what it is.
Thanks.
Mr. Lawrence.
Ms. Robbins, what if the property owner doesn't want any help in removing junk and trash from their property? In fact, they don't, you know, they think it's treasure. What about that?
I'm glad you brought that up, because, you know, as an individual property owner, we have property rights. We have constitutional property rights that prohibit you from infringing upon that, even if you don't like the looks of it. So for someone to enforce perhaps what, you know, they're used to in the law 48 up here in Alaska, based on aesthetics alone, I think is incredibly shallow. I like a good yard as much as anybody. Trust me, I know. I don't like seeing eyesores. But you know what? These people have rights, and so to infringe on their rights just because you don't like what it looks like is the height of shallowness and just unconstitutionality. I don't know how else to put it.
What about the neighbor who has, does he have any property rights?
No, my neighbor can't tell me what to do. So, but here's the thing. If, if, okay, let's pretend you have a junkyard, and someone wants to move in and buy property right next to you, because, guess what? You know, it's pretty cheap around your house, and they can build a really expensive house, and then bring their property value up, and then they look at your house, and you're like, well, you're bringing my property value down, so then they want to do something about it, like, well, at least put up a fence. You know, the thing is, you have to consider who was there first. If you don't like the looks of his yard, you shouldn't have moved in next to him.
Okay, but, so you would agree then that if, if a property owner is there, if a neighbor is there first, and then a property owner starts compiling or amassing a junkyard, in that case, then the junkyard person does have to comply or has to, you know?
Oh, I think you should consider the neighborhood, but, you know, if it's an industrial neighborhood, and, you know, that's why every case should be brought before the assembly via an ordinance, and you should say, well, here's the circumstances. This guy has a pile of scrap metal, very valuable scrap metal, that he is going to melt down, and, you know, used for his retirement. It may not look good for a little bit. You know, I know one particular teenager, who isn't here tonight, but would have loved to have been here, he has a collection of antique cars, and he just found out, well, that would be considered a junkyard, because some of them aren't working right now, probably most of them, and that he would need a fence. But to call them junk, something needs to be done about that. It's not, they're not junk.
All right, thank you.
So questions from Mr. Question, questions from Mr. Roberts.
I have a technical question for the attorney. So Ms. Robbins and Ms. Dildner both testified in this matter and suggested or claimed that they're, this is not constitutional, and I was curious if you could speak to the constitutionality of the matter.
So you can have laws under your powers that then you enforce with your limited police powers to enact them, and it's not a taking, I think is what they're claiming, if you give due process and notice and opportunity before you do that.
But the fund would take away due process, sorry.
So I think the, perhaps misunderstanding about the fund is the timing of how it would be used. It would be used after going through court proceedings and court processes, and then it would be in order to enforce those court orders.
Thank you.
Mr. Roberts, do you have a question?
Yes. So do you believe that in some extreme case where somebody came into a nice neighborhood, however you define that, and then they built a horrendous junkyard, however you define that, do you believe that the decisions, ultimately, if you go through an entire process and through court, and you're going to have a taking then, do you believe that that decision should just be made administratively, or do you think that the assembly should consider whether we want to go to the step of taking that person's property?
I should definitely think the assembly, it should go through the assembly first, just because, you know, in light of mini council, you know, there's a little more wisdom, but it's one step closer, I mean, maybe if you have to go to court, but, you know, it's one step barrier before that would happen, which would be expensive to both parties. And, and one, just one note quickly about, if you're in a nice neighborhood, and someone comes in and they're able to do that, you have no legal right to make them change, because the only reason I can, I can think that there would be an issue is if you had covenants, and it's like, well, you have to adhere to the covenants. But if there's no covenants, then it's a free-for-all.
Okay, so Mr. Roberts had, you had your question answered. Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Robbins? Seeing none, thank you. We appreciate you coming down. So I have David Bubba Watson up next. Ms. Potter, please give us your name, spell your last name.
Cindy Potter, M-P-O-T-T-E-R, and I live off Chino Hot Springs Road. So I think, I thank you for listening today, and I wouldn't want to be in your seat. I say, please use the facts. Mary Siya has some problems, but it isn't coordinating with the report. And these are some suggestions, maybe to get some extra money, maybe eliminate some of the borough employees or offer them early retirement. Another suggestion is to close the hammy pool, and Fort Wainwright has a pool, and it's for swimmers, it's colder, it's big, and have the high school students or the students bust, or the parents can take them over to the Fort Wainwright pool. So the money that was going to go into hammy could go to Mary Siya. That's working right now with an ice hockey rink at Fort Wainwright, and the parents bring the kids onto Fort Wainwright to use the ice skating rink. So that's a suggestion. If Mary Siya gets seismic study, then I think every borough building should have a seismic study, and I don't know how many buildings would be left after that report. So I think every building should have a seismic study. This is a little out there, but why not have a casino? Bring in, bring in money with that. We already have pull tabs, we've got marijuana going, why not throw in a casino? I mean, it's an option. When Mr. Bettiesworth came in and spoke at the last meeting at the very end, I also heard him say that he had just glanced at the report. But all of you ask him very intense questions, and I'm not, this is very hazy, so I just don't know, you know, if I, what's going on with him, if he, if he's in charge of that company, or if he's retired, or why would he have only glanced at the report? You know, and I, I'm very hazy on that. I think the solar idea is a great option, along with coal and other energies, so I think maybe we should look at that, too, as an option. And just listening to her speaking about junkyards, in a way, it's like, it's covered with snow nine months out of the year. You're only seeing it three months out of the year. You know, so, I mean, the three months is bad, but the rest of the time is covered with snow. But I just really ask that you don't tear down Mary Siya until you have another building. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Potter. Let's see if there are questions for you. I don't see any. Thank you for coming down. We appreciate it and for your creative suggestions. I have Jennifer Hawk in the empty seat. Is Jennifer here? Okay, I, I'm getting an indication she's not here. Kathy Beasley? Is Kathy Beasley here? Let me turn my mic off. So no Kathy Beasley? Okay. Then we have Scott Calder. There we go. Mr. Watson, welcome. Please give us your name, spell your last name.
My name is Dave Watson, W-A-T-S-O-N. And first of all, I would like to thank all of you guys for all the hard work that you do, all the listening. You guys don't have an easy job, and I, we appreciate, I certainly appreciate it, and I can see all the hard work you guys put in. Secondly, I would like to congratulate Nancy on her long tenure, and I sure hope I look as good as she does when I get to her age. Now, the one question I have is, the borough has to have drawings on the building that Moneymaker did, and I don't know whether you guys have looked at them, I don't know whether you pulled them out, but there has to be drawing and prints and all sorts of information of what went into the building in the 80s. Okay. Secondly, Moneymaker was the, as I understand it, was the main construction operation, uh, person. And he's back in town, he's retired, and I'm sure he would have those drawings. So that might save you a lot of money going out for all this testing, if it spells it all out. Well, it can't hurt to look at that stuff. Diane said, Mary Siya does give hope, and I really want to emphasize that. The guards, the lifeguards have told me more than once, when they see people come in, humped over, limping or whatever, and they're walking out with their head high and in better shape, better attitude. So it, it does give us hope. And when I interviewed, talked with you guys several weeks ago, that day I was in the jacuzzi, and Barbara was in there, and Barbara was a former teacher that we worked together, she worked for me. And I was about to give her a hard time, because I hadn't seen her, and I really encourage people to go there. And then Barbara, her husband teaches at the university, she said I had a stroke on Easter, and boy, it danced on me. I mean, that really, and of course, I wasn't going to give her a hard time, because we're real good friends, she's real quiet. And she sold it, told, told me that the doctor tells her to get in that warm water at Mary Siya and get in that jacuzzi, and she, and she was, and she will. And I go there almost every day, and I can fall, but I can't drown when I'm in the water. And that water is paramount to me, and I talk to so many people that I hear all these stories that, none of us hear all of them, and unless you're really talking with a person, you don't know, but they got bad backs, and they got this, and they got that. And I'm not just talking about old people, I'm talking middle-aged people. So it really does give hope. Something else, oh, my time's up.
Yeah, your time's up.
I wrote you guys an email, I don't want to go over it, because you guys can read, and I tried to make it short, because you've heard similar stories on and on, but perspective, the perspective of an old person is not like a young person. It just isn't. You can't walk in our shoes, you can't see your eyes. And an example I can give of you that, is when I was young, er, like you guys, I resented people that had parking permits. I thought they took advantage of it, they didn't need it, yada, yada. Well, now, my perspective is a 180, because I, that parking permit is super, huge. I've run out of time. Bottom line, I would say, don't demolish it. If, bottom line, you gotta just sell it.
Okay. So let's see if there's, let's see if there's some questions for you, Mr. Watson.
Okay, I'm sorry I took so long.
It's okay, we're seeing if there are questions, though. Some, some subjects can.
And I have a copy, but you guys have read it and got it, so, thanks for listening.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. We should say thank you for all the emails, even if we didn't respond, we've been reading them, and they've kind of became voluminous. Thank you, Mr. Watson. So we have next, Mr. Prox. Is Mr. Prox in the room? Nope. Jesse Shadley? Mr. Calder, thank you, welcome back, and please give us your name, spell your last name, tell us your neighborhood.
Hello again, Scott Calder, C-A-L-D-E-R, Esther area. Like to speak on the budget. Also, you called some names earlier, people who weren't here. I noticed that there were three ladies who left who couldn't hear the meeting in the room.
Sorry.
And they, they told me that they were all in favor of the Mary Siya Rec Center, so. Also, I tried to get to several budget-related topics here, but mostly, I guess, focus on the Mary Siya Rec Center. I was here in this room when Mr. Bettiesworth indicated that he was not substantially involved in this 75-page report that people are talking about. Not sure what the end of that subject is, but I did hear him say that. Also, there's been some talk about some type of a new look at the building, and we've talked about nonprofits or selling the building. I know there's a working group now that is trying to meet and figure out how to approach this problem. I think that it would be worthwhile to provide for the inclusion of interested parties in this building survey. I mean, if you end up trying to sell the building to somebody or get somebody to take it over, there's people who'd probably like to know what the situation is with the building, and given the fact that some people are questioning the veracity of the administration's work on the study of the building, it might be good to have some other observers there. So Mary Siya is a unique facility, it provides essential human services, and I think you should continue to operate it. I realize that the numbers maybe don't make sense, but given the fact that there are essential human services, I think that's just a situation that needs to be addressed. Might not be, might not seem cost-effective, but I think the human services justify that. Also, I think it would allow time for transition to a private buyer or nonprofit, a new center, you know, all these different things that people sort of brought up at the last minute, you know, maybe not have it be the last minute quite yet. User fees could be increased somewhat. Also, I think there's, it's underutilized. I think you probably get more people in there, and maybe have the subsidy factor go down somewhat. Other budget priorities that I think are important, historic preservation, cultural heritage, other human services, real recycling, not just recycling on paper, please. I mean, spending millions of dollars at the transfer sites, and we still don't really have, you know, recycling. I mean, if anything, we're probably burying more stuff in the earth now, because it's all hidden in dark places at the transfer sites where nobody can recover that. And it seems to me that the priority should be to help people do what they normally do, and not have privacy invasion and coercion, manipulation. May I continue for a moment? Okay. You know, we've got a lot of interventionist-type stuff, we've got dumpster micromanagement, school district's got $30 million sitting around, apparently, domestic heating surveillance, code enforcement, services to animals, and, you know, some people would say cruelty to humans, beach improvements, we've got a planning department, but it seems like we get pie in the sky and more restrictive. So I think you see where I'm going here, and quality of the life should be, quality Quality of life should be, quality of life should be the government serving the people and working for the people and not the people working for the government. And I think that even people who might be against the public services, you know, that other people are for, would think that that would be a monetary savings also. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's see if there are questions. I think Mr. Lawrence has a question for you and Mr. Quest.
Mr. Calder. Sir. Do you believe this borough should provide public services in those situations where it doesn't make sense numbers-wise or that it's not cost-effective?
Yes, sir, to some degree. And I think that that would be considered on a case-by-case basis and that that would not be precipitous kind of thing, but that we'd have ongoing processes for that. And the Mary Syre Rec Center, as an example, has been something in existence for many years. And, you know, it might, it might not be a moneymaker, but I think it is important. And I think that that's maybe a place where some of what you suggest is warranted.
So if, clearly it's not a moneymaker, but if it, if it is a money drain, you would support continuing its operation and doing whatever maintenance is necessary, even though that means other borough services have to be eliminated?
Possibly.
How is it not possible that if we're spending more money on Mary Syre, that we're not spending less somewhere else?
Oh, no. I mean, if it's strictly a matter of numbers, if you add numbers in one place, then in principle, if it's a zero-sum game, then you lose numbers in other places. And I've suggested that, in my opinion, and of course, everybody has different opinions, that I think the lower priorities are some of these, just real quick, a few of them, you know, this domestic heating surveillance, and I know some people call it air quality, but we've got code enforcement and beach improvements that are just talked about. You know, there's a lot of things that maybe somehow make sense on paper or with numbers, but just to the average person out here who sees the three documents in the rack out there for the meeting, it's some kind of insurmountable obstacle to, you know, any reasonable understanding of what's going on. You know, a lot of us, we just don't get it. It's just, you know, as somebody said earlier, there's just, there's something wrong with this picture when you've got all these things that seem to oppress people in some way or another, and then you've got a few things that are, you know, genuine human services, which I think are meritorious and arguable in favor of that. And well, we can't have the good stuff, but you know, it's like we've got, we can't have the good socialist schemes, but we have to have the bad socialist schemes. And, you know, I think conservatives and liberals alike would possibly be able to get together and decide that that's just upside down. And it may seem irrational. It may not make sense in numbers, but it's, I think it leads to an overall feeling on the part of citizens that there's something wrong with this picture. And when I was over at the school district earlier this week, there was a gentleman who testified, I'm surprised it wasn't me, but there was a gentleman who testified that he thought they had a credibility problem. And so I think there's a general sense of that in society, and something like closing down the pool is an example of that, and something like spying on people when they heat their houses is an example of the reverse thing.
Have you had your question answered?
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Quest, do you have a question?
Yes, yeah, thank you for your testimony. You made a comment, it was kind of confusing to me. You said service to animals, cruelty to humans. I just wasn't, wasn't sure it was a juxtaposition or conflation or what you meant by that.
There might have been a little glib on my part. Shall I respond or...
Yeah, I'm genuinely curious what you meant.
Well, I mean, I think there's a lot of people in this room who are in favor of this pool who feel it's always rather cruel to just, you know, dismantle the only pool that serves their needs or this, this one facility that, that seems to be the only possibility for serving their needs, even to the point of, you know, life, health, and safety of many citizens and potentially many other citizens. And yet, we're talking about building a new animal shelter and things. I mean, not to, you know, I don't want to, you know, I guess, get into conflict with other people who have other interests, but, I mean, the resolution 2018, 16 or 18, whichever it was, that had the 11 things for proposed bond measures, a new animal shelter, you know, I mean, you know, we're gonna have, get rid of the only pool that has services to, you know, therapeutic services, development of disabled and things like that, but a functioning animal shelter, we're gonna build a new one of those, and, and beach improvements on a bond issue? You know, nobody's ever gonna vote for the bond issue for $75 million, and it's got a new animal shelter and beach improvements on it. So there's never gonna be another Mary Syre if you don't keep this hall open.
So just on this point, so you're aware that the budget that we're considering this week, you know, acting on next week, has $0 for a new animal shelter in it?
Yes, sir, I am aware of that. However, it has been counterposed that, in consideration of the Mary Syre question, that there would be a new aquatic center built later sometime in the future, maybe if people vote for it, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and no plan or specifications for that. And oh, yeah, on the list also, a new animal shelter. And I'm just saying that that reflects an overall consciousness and viewpoint that, to me, seems upside down if, you know, if we're just, we're gonna close the pool, but, you know, we're not gonna close the animal shelter, we're gonna build a new one of those. And I guess the animal shelter, I don't want to pick on that too much, that's not the most offensive thing, but, I mean, it just, it just seems like it doesn't balance out to me, where the priorities are.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Calder? Seeing none, thanks for coming down. We appreciate your...
Thank you all very much.
...with this. I have Blake Burley in the empty seat and Mr. Shadley. Welcome. Please give us your name, spell your last name, and tell us your neighborhood.
My name is Jesse Shadley, S-H-A-D-L-E-Y, and I live off Badger in North Pole. You know, I think Mike Dunleavy said it best when he was recently talking about the dividend, and he said that nobody knows how to spend your money better than you. My property tax dollars, along with everybody else in this room that owns property, keep going higher and higher, but the services we get keep getting cut smaller and smaller. You know, you got a big portion of this room, plus however many that can't make it tonight, who are drastically impacted by this Mary Syre, but somehow, we've got money to squirrel away in a little cleanup fund hidden in the budget to take people to court and tell them what they can and can't have on their, their private property. Something's really backwards here. You know, I get an eyesore, but, you know, like Mr. Lawrence has said before about, you know, neighbors and everything, part of property rights is both people can put up offense if they don't like it. You know, I can put up offense if I like, my neighbor can put up offense if he likes. Now, fortunately, neither of us are, you know, stacking up garbage bags of magazines from the transfer site, but, you know, let's look at what the purpose of the borough government is. I was always of the understanding that that was to provide essential services. You know, I mean, you got the hours of the transfer sites now cut down to closed at 7 o'clock. Well, for an individual like myself, I get off work at 6 o'clock, I got three kids that I'm taking care of, 7 o'clock's kind of hard to make that timeline. But then you're gonna go after people who allegedly have too much junk on their property. And all it's gonna take is one person saying, well, I couldn't make the 7 o'clock cutoff, and the borough's in real quandary, so.
Thank you, Mr. Shadley. Questions for Mr. Shadley? Seeing none, thank you for coming down. We appreciate your, your comments. Mr., I have an empty seat, so anyone that hasn't spoken that wishes to speak at this time, there's an empty seat, please come forward. And Mr. Burley, welcome. Please give us your name, spell your last name, and tell us your neighborhood.
Good evening. Blake Burley, B-U-R-L-E-Y, and I live off Florence Road in North Pole. I think it's unfortunate that so many things that I can think of offhand under the current borough administration that just don't align with the public's needs and desires. One that's been pointed out recently here is the transfer sites. Now, when we had our, what do we call it, trials at the transfer sites, I went to a couple of different ones there, the one off Farmers' Loop and the one in North Pole. And I did notice it was significantly cleaner, but never in my 25 years of life have I ever taken a picnic at the transfer site. That's, that's never been on my list. I think that's a huge waste of money to be cleaning up something that's got a fence around it. Every time they go and empty the dumpsters, they rake up the trash. That's ridiculous to waste our, our money on that. Something else is definitely the, the air quality, that we are spending all this time, money, and energy on taxing our people for heating their homes when I don't think there's been a single word said about people idling their cars in the Fred Meyer parking lot. And I dare say, a lot of people have a much more adverse reaction to the emissions from a vehicle than they do for the emissions from a wood stove. Something else also is, is this money that's being put in for cleaning up junkyards. And, and I believe that of all things, that, that scream just freedom to me. It's the ability for me to either build a $500,000 house or a junkyard on a lot, and it's completely my choice. And, and I think to take away that freedom from us is, is just, just stepping in the wrong direction of where our country was founded, the, the things that, that we have. Moral responsibility is what it comes down to. And I think Lance Roberts has said this a long time ago, that it's up to you as, as a morally responsible citizen to look out for your neighbors and realize, hey, you know, my neighborhood's kind of picking up, and I've got a junkyard, I'm gonna clean this up. And that's your moral responsibility. It's not the responsibility of the government to go in and clean it up. It's the responsibility of our neighbors. If, if we can go in as a neighborhood and say to these people, say, hey, you know, we'd really like your place cleaned up, and if there's enough people in that neighborhood that want that, they can make a covenant and, and, you know, force them into that. As far as Mary Syre, I definitely think if there was truly a, a risk for the public, the borough, the city engineers would go in there and immediately close it, condemn the building, and not allow anyone in there. That's not happened. I don't believe it's a threat to our public safety, and I would encourage you to keep it open.
Thank you, Mr. Burley. Let's see, Mr. Roberts has a question for you.
So on this cleanup fund that right now, if the budget passes, if it passes in the budget this next week, gives the administration the ability to take property without ever going back in front of the assembly, so that the assembly doesn't even know that this is going on, and we read about in the papers and find out about it, do you believe that the administration should be able to make that choice, or do you think that the assembly, when going to the level of taking somebody's property, should use their discretion?
I absolutely think there should be a due process come before the assembly. Absolutely. I think it's irresponsible to, to vest more and more authority to a, an administration that has proven themselves irresponsible.
Mr. Tuck, he has a question for you.
Just in your question about property rights, previously, you've come and testified to the assembly concerning like marijuana establishments. So you think it'd be okay for me to open, or is anybody to open a cultivation facility in your neighborhood?
I don't think it's morally responsible to smoke marijuana or to encourage marijuana. I don't think there's anything exceptionally other than, than an eyesore for a junkyard. I, I dare say those are two completely different items.
Just follow up on...
But yes, I, I, as, as far as that goes, I would not want you to open a marijuana facility anywhere, not in my neighborhood, not in somebody else's neighborhood. I wouldn't want you to open it. So, I mean, just, just across the board as far as that goes.
And then my follow-up question is like, don't you see that that would be the purpose of community planning and having appropriate zoning for places that are, is like heavy industrial, which...
Right, which is, which is what we've done. Right.
Exactly.
That's right. But yes, as far as marijuana goes, I don't want it. I don't, I don't want it anywhere. So, you know, I mean, I, I would say there's, there's good spots for junkyards and there's bad spots for junkyards. I don't think there's a good place anywhere for a marijuana cultivation facility.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Burley? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Burley. We appreciate you coming down. Okay, so we've got another empty seat, and this is on the budget. Please remind us of your name and spell your last name and give us your neighborhood.
Thank you. Donna Von Der, V-O-N-D-E-R, space capital H-A-E-R, off the Farmers' Loop. Thank you. When I was at the sandbox, which you could reverse and say quicksand, but when I was at the sandbox at Alaskan Land, the mayor said that the building was gonna fall down. But he was talking about the bonds, building whatever, people voting for bonds. And somebody stood up, I don't think anybody else heard because we didn't all have mics. He asked, well, if we have this bond issue and it's gonna be a building, are you just doing the outside or are you planning the inside for the, you know, how much to add to the bond? He says, well, it's just the outside, we don't do the inside yet. So that's a building, just a building, not the money for the inside. And I, and I just thought, how strange, you know, because if you have a bond, we need to know how much we're actually paying, don't you think? I don't know, maybe the mayor can answer. I don't know. Now.
Okay, is that...
Not really. The casino thing that Cindy brought up, you know, if you guys, it might help because there's a lot of people that get free flights and free hotel in Las Vegas to gamble. I mean, if we had something like Alaska gambling, just think how much money that'd bring in. You had this marijuana, which I voted for, but publicly, I thought it was just medical. I didn't know it was recreational, which I'm against.
Super, thank you. So let's see if there are questions for you or answers or... I don't see any. Thank you. We appreciate you coming down. So let's see, I have another empty seat if someone wishes to come down and speak. Okay, welcome, Mr. Dowdy. Please spell your name and tell us your name.
D-O-W-D-Y, Steel Creek Road.
Thank you.
We have not just a Mary Syre, the Stern Wheeler, Pioneer Hall, Aircraft Museum. They're not letting us down as much as our leadership is letting us down. They're going out and condemning the buildings and saying we gotta spend a lot of money to get new ones to replace them over the years. Now, Mr. Castle, mayor, was on this assembly, he worked around these buildings when he worked for the borough. This is not a new problem. We're gonna have somebody that says we can save and use what we've got, not tear it down and build new. This is not just a borough problem, this is a community problem. You can't say I decide, it's we decide. And that, to me, is where the assembly comes in. You've got to assess what the people want and work with them. You keep the mayor straight. That's my thing. Now, he's going out in junkyards and telling people what they can and cannot do on their property. Well, just a few years ago, last year or so, we opened it up so anybody across town could give a complaint against you and remain anonymous. A few years ago, I was testifying about a problem in Badger Road area, and I was called on it because I didn't live in the neighborhood. These are really conflicting deals. And now, they can come across town and condemn my property without me knowing who did it. That doesn't seem quite fair, and I've been called on it. I showed the assembly a few years ago where the borough mayor had taken over a road on a whim, and the assembly not chose to follow up on it. Nobody asked the borough mayor, or the lawyer, what she could do, or if it's illegal, or what was going on. They should have. But my first testimony that night, from the testimony of people behind me telling me, she stepped through the whole meeting with her head in her hands. She knew more than I did.
Thank you, Mr. Dowdy. Let's see if there are any questions for you. I see two, Mr. Quest and Mr. Roberts.
Thank you for your testimony. You mentioned that, you know, we have a lot of ancient borough buildings and that, you know, they need to be addressed somehow, and tearing them down is not necessarily the answer, you know, and replacing them is not necessarily the answer. I was just curious, what, what metrics you think we should be using to determine what to do with a borough facility?
Okay. I'll agree the building is in very bad condition, but they are buildings that's been kind of a landmark for this town. It's important for the community. And not just one person should condemn these buildings and say they're not fixable, they're not usable. The community should be involved, and we ditch them at the last ditch effort. The community's gotta have a chance to come in, and some people in this community would put their own money in it. Don't just kill them because you can, because you want a new building.
Okay, so if I could follow up, I get, at, at some point, like, there's like a, a question of cost and a question of maintenance versus like longevity, right? So we can pay X millions of dollars over a shorter period of time to keep something open, or we can maybe pay more and get more usable life out of a new structure, and there might be operational savings as well. I mean, I get, I, I hear that you want to preserve as much as we can. I guess my question is, like, at what point do we, like, take into account the reality of the, the numbers in, in that decision?
There's no real answer to that. That's a decision somebody's gotta make, and you're part in it. It's a community perspective. And you're essentially in a position that you've got to make the final decision, not me. I can be part in it. But I didn't run for the office to be in a position to make that decision.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts, and then the mayor, and then Mr. Lawrence.
So with the cleanup fund, do you believe that the assembly should cede their authority to the administration and allow the money to be appropriated upfront, and then the administration can choose where to spend it without knowledge from the assembly on that?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, and then Mr. Lawrence.
I had a question on what road you were referencing or whatnot, because the attorney and I are confused about your reference about the mayor taking a road. Are you referencing us or before?
Well, it was a, no, it was back when you were chairman, Spudberry Road, you were...
So a different mayor and a different attorney. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lawrence.
Mr. Dowdy, if, if a road service area receives complaints that a semi is parked in a cul-de-sac for months and months at a time and not relocated, and the owner can't be, you know, isn't doing anything about it, or at least the property owner is not taking responsibility, do you think this assembly should have to approve the, the towing away of that vehicle?
Not necessarily. It wouldn't have to in my subdivision. We kind of take care of that. I've been told to move the building off the right of way. I did.
What if, what if somebody didn't? Is that something, and we're talking about a vehicle in the right of way, is that something that the administration should have to come to this assembly to, to get authorization to have it towed?
That's a good question, and these are all debatable. And as a last resort, yes.
Second question, you say we should be, you're not, we should be putting more, more resources into preserving our facilities. Would you support defeating the tax gap and increasing taxes to do so?
No.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate your honesty.
Any other questions for Mr. Dowdy? Seeing none, thank you. Appreciate you coming down. So I have an empty seat if some, if, so I have an empty seat if anyone wishes to come forward and testify at this time. Ms. Miller, right?
Yes.
Please give us your name and spell your last name and tell us your neighborhood.
My name is Pamela A. Miller, M-I-L-L-E-R. I live in, off Belane Road in Muskoggs area.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity to comment on the budget for the next year. And I'll say right up front that I urge you to give full funding for the next year for the Mary Syre Rec Center and continue its operation. I spoke last time on the process of the budget, and after listening to all the testimony and some of the information about the Juno Aquatic Center and the bonding and that sort of thing, I said, hmm, maybe I want to find out more about what's going on in Juno. So I did quite a bit of web research. I talked to some people in Juno. We, and first, I'll say, here in Fairbanks, we have an incredible wealth of talent, and we have incredible minds, we have people who love their community. We are gonna have to step up to the plate in a more serious way, use our talents, volunteer for various boards, nonprofits, whatever it takes to keep our community the way we want it and for it to improve and maintain the quality of life. With that said, in Juno, interestingly, in 2015, they started the Juno Aquatics Board. It is not a fully empowered board under their borough, but it is an almost fully empowered board. They have used that board process to get better accountability over the management of their two pools, the new aquatic center that was built in 2011, and their downtown pool, which is a lot like our Mary Syre. Their downtown pool has a lap pool 83 degrees, a rep pool 90 degrees, sauna exercise deck. There aren't any warm pools at the aquatic center. There had been a proposal to shut down their downtown pool, was very much used by seniors and so on. The citizens stepped up to the plate, and they got this aquatic board going. What I found is that it was established by the ordinance, and it sunsets this year, their assembly gave them another year to come up with alternatives, but they have saved money in the operations. They've reduced the subsidy, they've increased their visitation, they've increased the enjoyment by the residents through this involvement of citizens in looking over the, the pool situation. They have a number of alternatives they're considering. Well, and another interesting thing, which I haven't seen for our budget, is how much it actually costs to run each pool in borough and each of our facilities in any kind of detail. So I can address that if you're interested. I do have one other point I'd like to make about the alternatives Juno is looking at, which are directly relevant, if there's questions about those.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions about... Yes, Mr. Roberts and then Mr. Cooper.
What is your, your final point you were gonna make?
My final point is that they are looking at a range of alternatives from keeping it with the board like they have today, reverting back to parks and recs, running it. Another alternative would be a fully empowered board where that board actually runs the pool and can hire and fire and do all this stuff. One alternative is for the YMCA to start a local chapter in Juno, but the borough would still own the buildings, and they would still be responsible for the major maintenance of and repairs of those buildings. They've been wrestling with these options for a number of years. I think they have a lot of lessons that they can teach us, and that to just say, well, sell it to a YMCA, that's a recipe for having it torn down without involving our citizens into what the options may be.
So, we just got a letter, and it was about the Riverboat Nynana, and it was very in-depth on all the repairs done, late 80s, 90s, I think, early 90s. And so it seemed to give the impression that there was a lot of community that came out and at least a fair amount of volunteer time, though I can't speak to details. I'm just wondering, do you think that the borough should reach out and allow more volunteers to help do things like maintenance and upkeep and things related to the facilities like that?
Certainly, I think there's a place for volunteers. I think part of what this board in Juno was able to accomplish was to find people who had in-depth knowledge. I think they were able to hire some people to help them with running pools, people who knew how to run pools were involved, as well as the other aspects of the facility. And I think with the way this was sprung on the public, we would be nibbling around the edges instead of tackling it in a really meaningful way that could achieve the kind of cost savings that Juno has achieved so far that they're looking to achieve in more detail.
Thank you.
Mr. Cooper?
I was going to ask about alternatives, but Mr. Roberts speaking to it, so.
Thank you. And I would, you had something about the report that you?
So, the other thing about their board, its meetings are public, they have a lot of public testimony about the five alternatives they've been evaluating for the future management, and they publish all their minutes, their agendas, their minutes, their background materials online, so there's a wealth of information. There's a lot of wealth of information from their board chair and their board, but under the time constraints of this is pending, I think we deserve the time to have more people look into how we can keep the pool open and the recreation center that is so valuable in our community.
Any other questions? I'm sure that we'd love you to either copy the report, if you would email us a copy of it, the clerks will forward it to us.
I will give you just one of the best reportings from their website. It's from January 23rd of the Aquatic Board. And I just will say this is Juno and how they chose to do it, but the model, I think, is a very valuable one, and we could also take some of the lessons to all of our other borough facilities, the 217 that exist out there, that that would be a fun quiz to see who could name them all.
Thank you very much. It would be. I don't think we'd find anyone that could. Let's see, so we have a, thank you, another empty seat if anyone wishes to come speak. And please, welcome, please give us your name, spell your last name, and tell us your neighborhood.
My name is Britten Tuck, T-U-C-K.
Thank you.
I live around the Chena Point area. I am 21 years old. I've lived in Fairbanks eight years now, and you're probably asking why I'm a 21-year-old sitting up here and wanting to speak to you. I am here to talk about Marysi. Me and my husband recently were married, and we are going to be leaving the Fairbanks area this coming fall. It's very sad because I love the Fairbanks area, but the budget and many decisions that are being made here recently are very troublesome to us. I find it very alarming that this group of people had a notice on their door, there was no notice on Big Dipper door, because if that were to happen, I believe that this whole building would be full of hockey moms and dads going out the door. This was a smaller group of people, and I felt the need to come up here and speak to add one more voice to their group. I know the difference between right and wrong. It's very black and white here, and I believe it's become a little gray. So when I walked in, a lady named Ms. Juliet, she is left now, she's an elderly, gave me this letter from her granddaughter in Boston, Massachusetts. Her name is Jessica K. Metz, and it is addressing the Marysi Recreation situation that we have going on now. She states in here that she comes for regular visits with her grandmother to swim in the aqua size class here, and she believes that it is part of the vitality and longevity of her health, and getting rid of this facility would demolish her health as well. She goes on to talk about Bettisworth, which I won't get into, but she is an architect in Boston and has had quite experience with repairing buildings, big and small. And she says in her letter, I'll just read a part of it, "While the presence of these problems is a sign to the building owner to be proactive and address them, we don't demolish every building in our cities every time we see these issues pop up. Not only is it unreasonable and wasteful, it is not economical. The cost estimate provided in the survey report estimates that the total estimated construction cost inclusive of fees to renovate Marysi is approximately 6.2 million or roughly 351 per square foot for the current 17,900 square foot facility. The cost for a new facility replacement is estimated at approximately 13.8 million or roughly 774 feet for the same square foot facility. I don't need to be an economist to see that 351 per square feet for repairs is less than half the cost for a new facility at 774 feet per square foot." So I really hope you all think very hard. I know you're in a very tough position. This whole issue has kind of been buying the trailer before buying the truck and having to pull it. So I hope that you all make a decision for people my age to want to stay around longer.
Thank you. And we did receive that email, by the way.
Yeah, awesome.
Any questions for Ms. Tuck? Mr. Chris has a question for you.
I have a technical question for the administration. So the figures that Ms. Tuck just referred to, you know, there's a 13-ish million for replacement of Marysi and then six-ish million for maintenance, that's like that six million number that's from the six-year plan? And my question is, that six-year plan buys us how many years of usability at Marysi?
Probably five.
Could you, if I could follow up, could you explain that to me? I was expecting maybe the number six or seven or eight, but I couldn't conceive of a number smaller than six.
Well, the issue is that the Bettisworth report is not a complete report for that facility, as Mr. Bettisworth identified. And so there is work beyond what is in his report that, and we don't know the full extent of that, which is why the report suggests we dig deeper into the building. And the reason I hesitated to give you an exact number is until we do a deeper dive, I can't say whether that money would go for four years or maybe seven years. The report identifies that there's suspicions that there's significant problems, and if that is accurate, we're looking at four years. So I put five, pick six, pick seven. I mean, I can't give you a solid answer on it. I know it's not a long-term solution is the bottom line to this, that there will be much more money required after it in the not-too-distant future to keep that facility open, so.
Thank you. Any other questions for you? Yes, Mr. Lawrence?
Mayor, how long does a new facility, what's the life demand of a new facility? If we're talking about an aquatic center?
Well, obviously, it depends on how it's built. I just came in from Washington DC where everything's granite and lasts a long time, so the buildings are hundreds of years old. I would, most of our buildings go 50 years as our design criteria now, some a little longer, some a little less. Pools tend to be less because of the high caustic air quality within a pool. There are new designs that are better now and less caustic air with them and better ventilation systems. So I would hope we could get 50 years out of one. That would be our target, but it is a challenge because some of these technologies are newer, and I couldn't give you a solid answer on that. And a lot of it depends on how much money we want to put into the facility, too. Obviously, if we wanted to build it out of granite, you know, that's going to extend the life of the facility, but obviously the initial capital cost also.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Tuck? Seeing none, thank you. We appreciate it and congratulations. So we have another empty seat if someone wishes to come down. Mr. Shields, have you already spoken on this?
This is a budget issue, so.
Let's make sure.
This is a budget issue.
Let's see if there's anyone else. Thank you. I see someone else coming down. We will come back. Mr. Tuck, welcome, please give us your name.
Sam Tuck, T-U-C-K, Chena Point. I come here tonight in support of Marysi, keeping it open. I really don't have anything else I could add to the testimony that's been given tonight. I've heard some great testimony here. My comment would be this, do not turn the Marysi into a political wedge issue. That's what I see it as right now. And also, you need to look at what the definition of preservation is. And, you know, bulldozer, we know what a bulldozer is, push it down. Preservation is a whole different topic. So we don't have many historical landmarks in Fairbanks. Honestly, the only ones I can think of right off of Pioneer Park, some of the older buildings there, I may be mistaken, there may be some others, but not that I'm aware of. To have been here as long as we have, which is not tremendously long compared to the East Coast, but still, we have no history here. Marysi, I think, is considered a historical building, in my opinion. It may not be a registered historical building, but I believe it is a local historical landmark. So I would ask you not to turn this into a political wedge issue. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Tuck. Let's see if there are questions for you. Oh, Mr. Chris has a question for you.
I have two, actually. First, could you expound on the idea of this being a wedge issue? Politically, I don't understand.
I can't see at all the urgency of tearing it down before a bond issue is put up before the voters. I mean, it just seems completely backwards. I mean, why would you buy car tires and not have a car?
I understand. Thank you. My other question, if I may, so, I mean, you could talk about other borough buildings in this answer if you want, but like just in the context of Marysi, since, I mean, that's what you're interested in today, can you imagine a scenario where it would be prudent for the borough to replace the facility? And, you know, and if so, what does that scenario look like?
Maybe at some point. Economically, I can't see it at this point in time. I mean, I know some people think the economy is bumping right along, it's not. I don't think a bond issue will be supported in the fall. Why would you tear your house down before you had another house to move into? I just don't understand that. I mean, if you had to lock the doors and leave it, it's got locks on the doors. If it's a safety issue, it should have been closed before now.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
So do you believe that going to shut down the Marysi now has the appearance of trying to influence the bond election for the Aquatic Center that may be coming up?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question for Mr. Tuck.
Do you think that deliberately leading it up if you know it needs to come down six months later is trying to influence the bond initiative vote?
I don't see that could.
Any other questions for Mr. Tuck? Seeing none, thank you. We appreciate you coming down.
Thank you.
And we have another, we have another empty seat. If anyone wishes to come speak, please give us your name and spell your last name and tell us your neighborhood.
Marty Roth, R-O-T-H, off of Birch Lane, and I spoke to you the last time, but I just wanted to say again, I hear a lot of talk about keeping it open for four months or six months or something like that. To me, Marysi is an entity of its own, and I would much rather have it than a tennis court there. When they close it for maintenance, I went to Lathammy Pool one time and didn't ever go back, just because I didn't feel comfortable in the shower room. There's no rails to hold on to, it's, you know, the big shower coming out and totally open. I, to me, it's a completely different thing than the Aquatic Center. I'm off for an aquatic center, but let us keep Marysi. And then the other thing is I did go over to the Dipper, to the Parks and Recs office, and see if I could start donating like I do for KVC and the door and the food bank, and they don't have that set up yet, but they will be having it hopefully by fall. I left them, you know, a hundred dollar check, and I said, I don't want it to go to constructing, I want it to go to operation. It, to me, it's just such a big part of my life. I would just hate to see it go. And if it's going to go in four months, it might as well go tomorrow. You know, that's the way I feel. I want it long-term.
Thank you, Ms. Roth. Let's see if there are questions for you. I don't see any. Thank you for coming back down. And we have another empty seat if anyone wishes to testify still for the first time on this budget. Please give us your name, welcome, spell your last name.
My name's Janie Kramer Dalton. My last name is spelled C-R-E-A-M-E-R hyphen D-A-L-T-O-N.
Was that Janie or Genie?
Genie, J-A-N-N-E.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for being here and all your hard work on this budget and everything else. I have two things. One is Marysi. I believe it should stay open until another facility is built because it's critical, as you have heard. I personally don't use it, I should. My parents did before they passed, and it was a great, it helped them tremendously. And so my other issue is the Riverboat Nynana. I just found out about all this a couple of weeks ago when I went to, I'm sorry, I haven't been paying attention to what's going on in my hometown, but I went to a standing-room-only meeting for the Alaska Yukon, Tanana Yucuniscultural Society at the Pioneer Museum, and that's when I found out the trouble that the Pioneer Museum and, especially the Riverboat Nynana seems to be in the most dire straits right now. I did read, well, I glanced at the poll report that was done by a nautical archaeologist, and also the PDC engineers' report, and I assume the assembly has seen these, but, and I've also talked to a builder and another engineer who has been associated with the borough over the years, and they actually, they looked at the first couple of pages and decided it was a report created to justify demolishing the riverboat. That may or may not be true, but in my opinion, this riverboat is Alaska Pioneer Park, and it's also significant to the history of Alaska. It played a significant part, and it's also very educational story-wise, you know, they could bring, and maybe they already have in the past brought classes to the boat to see the diorama of all the rivers, the villages. And so, in my opinion, the riverboat should stay at Pioneer Park, and if the borough can't afford to maintain it, that the community and getting grants could step up to the plate to keep it, to restore it and maintain, maintain it in perpetuity. So that's my opinion.
Thank you, Ms. Kramer Dalton. Before you leave, let's see if there are questions for you. I don't see any. Thank you for coming down and speaking with us.
Thank you.
And for your passion. So I have one last, another empty seat. Is there anyone that wishes to come forward? So I now have another empty seat. If anyone else wishes to come forward, please take it. Welcome. Please give us your name and spell your last name.
Gerald Witten, W-H-I-T-T-O-N.
Thank you.
My interest is in Marysi Recreational Center. My background, I had a general contractor license at one time, a plumbing license, electrical license, built homes, owned a warehouse which I just recently sold and got rid of. The point is, Marysi, from the reports I've seen right now, is only really about 30 years old because it was rebuilt somewhere between 1981 and 86. So we're not looking at some old building, 57 years old, we're looking at almost a brand-new building. I defy anybody to go in that warehouse, in that swimming pool, and find a crack in the ceiling. Whoever built that built better than I could build. So I think that building is in good shape. All this stuff about all this repair requirements, to me, is just smoke and gun. It's just, it's just not true. If you went in that warehouse, any one of you went in that warehouse, I defy you to go around with me and point out all the deficiencies that you can visually see. Now, if they would let me get into the interior of the building, to see the other stuff that they're talking about, I don't think they could show me much of anything. And then the idea that they would sell that building for $1, that's total nonsense because that building is worth probably, I don't know, maybe half a million to a million dollars. And to tear down something like that, destroy, let's say a million dollars, just to be able to have some money to build a new building, which may never happen because I'm not going to vote for a new bond issue, and I, from vast experience, there's very few people who will vote for it either. So now we got a facility we just tore down, which is no longer used for anybody. We destroyed a million dollars worth of value, and all these people that use that, not only do the seniors use it, the handicapped use it, the children use it, all kinds of people use that place there. And some people will, the seniors don't need it, they can go somewhere else and that. Yeah, I could go somewhere else, and that's not a problem for me, but it is a problem for a lot of those people here. Now, when I had an operation a while back, I used that pool in that facility to recover from my situation, and that's what a lot of people do there. They're in there, one lady walks in there, she can hardly walk, but she walks in there with her crotch and that, and it takes her a long time to get in there, but that person can't go anywhere else but that place there because it's got all the facilities for it. And like I say, go in that pool, look at the ceiling, show me one lousy crack. You can show me places where a little bit of moisture got to the paint and that, and you can see one little hairline crack on this one corner of that building, but, oop, I'm out of time.
Well, thank you, Mr. Witten. Before you leave, let's see if there are questions for you. I don't see any. Thank you for your testimony, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to have another empty seat if anyone wishes to come down that hasn't already testified. Welcome, please give us your.
Hi, my name is James Taft, and I live on Central Ave in Ruhr subdivision.
Thank you. Can you spell your last name first, please?
T-A-A-F-F-E.
Thank you.
It's Irish. So anyway, the previous gentleman actually stole a lot of my thunder. I wholeheartedly agree with virtually every word he said. I've marveled, after spending 31 years in building maintenance with the school district and three and a half before that with the University of Alaska, incidentally, I had no idea he was going to say what he was going to say, but I just couldn't sit back in the audience and hear all this talk about how bad shape Marysi is, and using my observations and my experience, the building is in incredible shape where the public can walk around and see. You know, I haven't crawled underneath and been in certain other areas, but I've marveled for years as I swim on my back or float on my back in the lovely warm waters of Marysi, of how free of cracks and any distress I see the building is in. And I look, I make a point of looking around and seeing where there's stress fractures, where there's settlement issues or something like this, as I've found hundreds of places in the school district and various school buildings that I've been placed in. And so, you know, I just marvel that it's been built so well. I happen to know, not personally, and I haven't talked to him for probably a month or two, Mr. Dave Doverpool, who was the project manager for the rebuild, the total teardown and rebuild of Marysi Pool in the early 80s. And I've heard people pejoratively call it a older building, and in some sense, in that Marysi was instrumental in getting it saved in the 70s, it is an older building in that sense. But as Dave Doverpool said in his April 10 letter in Community Perspective in the News Minor, "The building was torn down to the ground, the foundation inspected, and then rebuilt with cutting-edge technology that was available at the time." Now, I don't know about you members, I don't know if you live in all houses that were all or buildings that were all built after 1981, but the building was built to high-tech, cutting-edge standards in the early 80s. Dave Doverpool wrote that in his letter. And he mentioned the double-wall construction, he mentioned the R-50 insulation in the building. I wonder how many assembly members live in a building that has R-50 wall and ceiling construction insulation. The building is new. Now, the Bettisworth report was interesting. I looked through it, I saw a lot of cosmetic stuff, the kind of stuff we would fix at the university and school district in-house, and so, and I also saw the clear, the clear conclusion that they came to is that the building is worth saving, and they said it could be fixed in stages over a period of years, and I seem to recall that it was less than $240,000 for the first initial year of maintenance on the building in order to do it for the first year. So I think Marysi is in way better condition than even the Bettisworth report allotted, and their conclusion was rating it a 4.5, and that it was eminently fixable. I don't buy the untold millions of dollars that allegedly it's going to cost over a period of years, but at the very least, they said the only crucial repairs it needed were less than $250,000 for the first year. It also needs revenue enhancement. Now, I'm fortunate, I have retirement and I have social security. I could pay triple, even quadruple the fees that I'm paying now to go Marysi, and I would willingly do it. I don't want to get things thrown at me from the people behind me. Some of those people can't, but some of us can and would be willing to do that. There could be a revenue enhancement, it could be by higher fees to people who could afford it, there could be a very confidential piece of paper you could fill out and say that you can't do it, and it could all be kept in-house and confidential for those who couldn't. Needs more usage, it needs more revenue enhancement, it also could use some corporate sponsors, and that's my two cents worth.
Thank you. Before you leave, let's see if there are questions. I don't see any. Thank you very much for coming down. So I have an empty seat for anyone that hasn't spoken yet, and I'm not seeing any takers, so I know that I have at least one person who wants to come up. We're at a place where when everyone that wishes to has spoken, people that wish to speak again can speak for one minute, and I know that Mr. Shields has indicated he would like to do that, so if there's someone else that wants to come up for one minute, Mr. Shields, you're fine. There's just, I'm just noting an empty seat, inviting someone up for the empty seat. No, no, oh, okay.
And I don't want to speak about Marysi. You guys have been listening to testimony for two and a half hours, I very much appreciate that.
This is one minute on the budget.
Yeah. Okay, one minute on the budget, I have a question. This community activity center, is that the?
I'm sorry, Mr. Lawrence reminds me that we didn't get your name and address. We got so excited.
My name's Robert Shields, I live in Woodruff subdivision.
Spell your last name.
S-H-I-E-L-D-S.
Thank you.
So I have a quick question here. Is the community activity center listed here on the line budget, is that the community recycling center?
That'd be Carlson Center.
Okay, because I couldn't find anything in here about the recycling center, and that's what I wanted to speak on. I was asked here to speak to the issue of Marysi, and I spoke to Scott Holder about another budget issue, which is a real concern to me, and I told him that, you know, for everything's a time and place. Well, the testimony I've heard to hear tonight about junkyards, and transfer stations, and trash, and tearing down buildings, you know, tells me that maybe now is the time and the place to bring this up. With thirty years of recycling experience, I can tell you that one of the biggest wastes of money this borough has put its horse behind is this idea of a centralized recycling facility. Many Fairbanksans were recycling just fine before the borough got into it. I've tried to bring people who are local entrepreneurs who want recycling solutions, and they're not interested. So, we're paying a lot of money for out-of-sight, out-of-mind, and we've hired a recycling manager that has absolutely no experience, so I don't understand how these are cost-effective options to consider continuing.
Okay, thank you. That was very close to one minute, good job. Let's see if there are any questions for you. Mr. Roberts has a question for you, and Mr. Tecky has a question for you.
So, did you know on the yellow section that's got appropriations, which is Attachment A, on page eight, it has some of the revenues from recycling, and if you look elsewhere, you might find some more stuff, it's gonna be in the solid waste section.
Yeah, I was looking for it.
Any, oh, let me see, Mr. Tecky had a question for you.
No, Mr. Roberts, give me the-
Okay. Now, Mr. Quist has a question for you.
I have a technical question for the administration. Mr. Shields said that the recycling manager doesn't have any experience, and I was curious, I mean, if you could speak to that? Is that an accurate characterization of the recycling manager?
So, our recycling manager, he is a very well-seasoned, twenty-year military veteran who's got tons of experience managing large industrial projects, he never fetched recyclables, but he knows what he's doing, he's doing a fine job. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Shields? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Okay, I'd just like to point out that the application requires four years of minimum experience for recycling.
Thank you. So, I have another empty seat if anyone wishes to have a one-minute bite at the apple. Ms. Miller, welcome back.
My name's Pamela A. Miller. I want to give, what, do I need to say more about why you-
Yeah, your neighborhood.
Muskets Trail.
Okay, thank you.
I meant to say, in my testimony about Juneau, that once you build a building, it's not built perfectly, and they are still struggling with some of the things that weren't done right, and having to put major money still into that building, they are still having to deal with other issues like that. My second point is about, I would like to ask for a public observer, someone who is trained, and would know what they're looking at, on behalf of the public, the friends of Marysi perhaps, to accompany the inspection for the seismic survey. Thirdly, I would ask, why wasn't a very important feature of an analysis of a building, the scope of work including, why did it not include the seismic survey in the first place? I would hope for our other buildings that we're looking at, their status, that that be done. And I understand there's various tiers of seismic surveys, but it was not part of the scope of work, and that is why we are where we are, correcting perhaps the problem.
Okay. So, let me see if there's any questions for you. If Mr. Lawrence has a question.
Ms. Miller, are you, in researching the swimming scene in Juneau, do you know how old the downtown swimming pool building is?
Yes, in Juneau, their pool was built in nineteen seventy-three, the downtown pool, the Aquatics Center, two thousand and eleven. The Anchorage YMCA pool was built in nineteen seventy-eight. Our building is actually in the same range.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Miller? Seeing none, thank you. And we have another empty seat for a one-minute bite at the apple. A Miss Berger?
Yes.
Welcome back, please give us your name, spell your last name, give us your neighborhood.
Maria Berger, Goldstream Valley, my last name spelled B-E-R-G-E-R.
Thank you.
I'd like to elaborate on some of the comments that Britton made, that were voiced by Jessica Metz, the Registered Architect, who took a thorough look at the Bettisworth Report, and has swum at Marysi regularly, with her grandmother, who was one of the, who was planning to testify here tonight. She says, "Buildings are bad liars. The vast majority of their problems are shown in plain sight to the trained eye. Structural deflection and movement issues are typically expressed in cracked gypsum boards, sagging beams and ceilings, and out-of-plane walls. Water infiltration leaves behind staining residue and mold, even when the liquid water is long gone. Corrosion is a common cause of cracked and spalling concrete. When these signs are present in your building, further investigation is needed to determine the root cause, as well as an economical repair. However, the majority of buildings will exhibit these problems throughout their lifetime. While the presence of these problems is a sign to the building owner to be proactive and address them, we don't demolish every building in our cities every time we see these issues pop up. Not only is it unreasonable and wasteful, it is not economical." And that's my contribution.
Thank you very much. Let's see if there are questions for you. I don't see any, thank you.
Thank you.
And we have another seat for a one-minute bite at the apple, if someone was, one last thing they want to say for one minute. Mr. Dowdy, welcome back, please give us your name, spell your last name, and tell us your neighborhood.
Hey, Mr. Dowdy, D-O-W-D-Y, in Steel Creek Road area. I would like to back up Mr. Shields' statements. We put in three or four million dollars in the sustainable complex last year. That could have been going into maintaining buildings. The recycling center should be able to pay for itself, I would hope that no more money's being put into it. We've got three or four million already. Now, knowing anything about recycling, I got two or three hundred computers sent to my old place right now, I need to recycle. And they're older computers. These new computers, they're not worth it to me. There's not that much value in them. And I don't, I was recycling in my place, people might call it a junkyard, but I recycle quite a bit. So, it's all how you look at it.
Thank you, Mr. Dowdy. Let's see, Mr. Roberts has a question for you.
Did you know that there's talk out there, I don't know where it's going, but as was mentioned earlier, we've had a couple of letters from the Sustainability Commission and the Green Star about a fee being charged for electronics recycling?
I could see that, they want somebody else to pay for it, because on the average, we're spending sixty-five cents a pound to send this stuff in, and there's no real value in it.
I was just letting you know in case you want to get rid of your stuff.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Dowdy? Or recommendations? Mr. Quist?
Mr. Dowdy, did you know that the proposed fee wouldn't affect residential users of electronic waste recycling, as Mr. Roberts might have implied?
No, I don't pay any attention to it, 'cause I'm not figuring on giving it to the borough.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Dowdy? Seeing none? We have one more, one-minute bite at the apple. Welcome back, Ms. Kramer Dalton, right?
Yes.
Please, give us your name, spell your last name, tell us your neighborhood, you'll have one minute.
Okay, my name's Jeannie Kramer Dalton, C-R-E-A-M-E-R-d-A-L-T-O-N. I live off of College Road, Lamita area. I forgot to mention, I didn't know what was going on after that meeting, April eighteenth, and I tried to find out if any grants had been applied for in regards to the riverboat in Inana. Nobody, and I called this Alaska Association for Historic Preservation, and they said nobody had submitted anything yet, that a board member wanted to, but she had unexpected surgery and was unable to do it, and they would be happy if I or someone would submit it. So, I did. And it's to get on the ten most endangered historic properties list, and once it's on the list, it's eligible for all kinds of grants, and hands-on preservation assistance. And I brought a copy of it here, so, and can I say one more thing? It was mentioned that if the borough absolutely can't afford to restore it and maintain it, that it should be sold to somebody and legally kept to stay in Pioneer Park, and to be maintained perpetually. So, and that's my take, too, there's no other way.
Thank you, and thank you for submitting that grant, that's great news, I hope you're successful. Questions, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, you mentioned earlier, you know, an analysis or evaluation of the riverboat. Was there a figure, a dollar figure, on how much money it would cost to restore the riverboat?
This was the PDC Engineers Report, and I'm sorry, I haven't really read it, and I don't know if the cost is in there. I would think so. I assume that the Borough Assembly Members had got a copy of that, that's the report I was referring to.
All right.
I think the administration may be asking, being asked for it, Charlie.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Quist, no? Thank you very much, we appreciate you coming down and putting in that grant application. So, ma'am, I believe you haven't spoken yet? You have, if you'll give us your name and address, spell your last name, you'll have three minutes, and I have another empty seat for a one-minute bite. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Cheryl Corrick, C-O-R-R-I-C-K, and I live in the Geist Road area. Yeah, I wasn't gonna get up and talk, I hate public speaking, but some points came to mind while other people were talking, so I decided to bite the bullet. First of all, one thing that puzzles me, and frankly, makes me mad, was that a couple months ago, a sign was put up at Marysi Rec Center that said, "In July, we may be closing and demolishing the building." Now, that was the first I'd ever heard about it, and I understand there were sandbox meetings of which I was probably woefully uninformed about, which was my own fault, but it seems to me a huge step like this should have some time for the people to plan, to give their input, like five years would be a really nice amount of notice, you know, at minimum, a year or two, but not two months, three months, that's woefully inadequate. So, that's my input on that. And then, what we have here is what somebody said about the school district, a lack of credibility, and this is a big part of our problem with Assembly, and I've heard many, many people speak to this sort of thing, that there's not a trust here that we need to have. Part of the problem is, we're hearing a lot of speculation and not a lot of facts, and there's a feeling that maybe a lot of facts are being hidden from us. When I hear figures like, you know, this new building, or not new building, rebuilt building with all the issues, spending millions of dollars, you know, it's gonna last five years, well, you know, I could put out figures, too. I can say for five million dollars, we're gonna have a new building for thirty years. You know, I'm just as credible as that sort of speculation that we've been hearing here, this meeting and the one a couple of weeks ago, hearing things like, "We may get into that building that was rebuilt in the eighties and find asbestos and lead." Well, guess what? In the eighties, we weren't using asbestos and lead, they were tearing that stuff out. Things like comparing us to the Masonic Temple, and that the roof may fall in and kill hundreds of people. These are the reasons you guys don't get credibility. We're hearing this from our mayor, all due respect. We need to come together in truth and honesty, and put out facts, not speculation. And until those facts have been investigated and properly put out, we have no business talking about tearing down Marysi Rec Center, because frankly, the people don't believe the information we're being given. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Corrick, let's see if there are questions for you. Mr. Lawrence has a question for you.
I know this isn't gonna be well-received in this room, but could some of the reason be that people don't believe what they're hearing is because they don't want to believe it?
Of course, that's gonna be part of it, but a bigger part is, there's been no notice, all of a sudden, this is sprung on us, and then we hear what could be described at the worst as catastrophic thinking, and at the best as a glass-half-empty kind of thinking.
All right, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Roberts, and then Mr. Quist.
Do you think that part of the reason there might be a lack of credibility is because all the numbers being given out seem to be worst-case scenario numbers?
Yes, and every time we hear them, the numbers go up.
Mr. Quist?
Thank you. I'm gonna ask you a question, I asked a couple of other testifiers, I didn't get a straight answer, but I've got a feeling I'm gonna get a straight answer from you. Can you imagine a scenario where a borough facility, a swimming pool in this case if you choose, needs to be replaced, where that's the prudent decision, to replace it with a modern facility? And if so, what does that scenario look like?
Yes, and what I would think is that scenario would look like, there'd be some long-term planning, and there would be a replacement for that facility being torn down.
I guess, if I could rework the question again, I mean, what metrics, what kinds of things do we need to take into account in order to make that decision? Okay, like, it's not a good idea to replace it this year, but it's a good idea to replace it in five years, I mean, what numbers, what, I mean, I could offer some suggestions, but I'd like to hear yours.
I would think that the years would depend on the plan to replace it, you know, if it takes two years to build another building, another facility, then, you know, plan to tear it down in two years.
If I could try a third time, so, there's like a cost-benefit analysis maybe that you might do, or, I'm not trying to give you the answer, but like, I mean, we're talking about a budget ordinance here, so we're talking about dollars.
Yes.
So, like, so I guess my question is, like, is there a tipping point? And if so, what is the tipping point, when it comes to replacement? And I mean, the first part of the question you answered, yes, there is a tipping point. And my second question or the follow-up is, what is that tipping point? And what does that look like?
Other than basic safety issues that cannot be repaired, I guess a tipping point would be at the point where, yeah, it can no longer be maintained.
Mr. Quist, are you asking, is there some dollar, that if you had to spend twice as much to repair it as you did to replace it, or something like that? I think that's kind of what he's asking.
I think that's impossible to answer, really, because figures are all variable, you know, you take from one place to pay for another one, and, yeah.
Okay, so I mean, if I could just, I'll leave it after this, so you're telling me that it's impossible to determine at what point it's prudent to replace a facility?
For me, yes, I don't have that information, I would need to answer that.
So, our job's really hard, then, I guess?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Mr. Roberts?
So, in your opinion, is the core of the issue that we're looking at replacement with a future timeframe to the replacement coming in, but yet getting rid of the building now? In other words, we don't have a place for those being served by that building, and won't for a couple of years, in the best scenario? Do you think that's the core of the issue, is that the services, the people who are getting the service will not have a place to get that same service?
Yes, and the people don't necessarily believe that it's necessary.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Corrick? Seeing none, thank you. And we still are in one-minute second bite at the apple. Yeah. Welcome back, Mr. Collins.
Who could resist another minute?
Okay, please give us your name and spell your last name, and tell us your neighborhood.
Scott Calder, C-A-L-D-E-R, Esther area. So, on metrics, not to be too glib, but it seems to me that, Mr. Quist, you and others have inherited a very small part of a very large problem that is maybe decades late in providing people with the necessary services of government, which they desire, and it seems that, you know, there's a public anxiety that, gee, wouldn't it be nice if we could start our own government to protect us from the one we have? And, you know, I mean, that's just an emotional observation, but that's kind of where people are at, in all their different little places, you know, with their own issues. And so, there's a general dysfunction, I think, that's of concern. By my count, there were about thirty people, maybe a little more, who testified. Marysi Pool got thirty, Junkyards got five, the Riverboat got one, and the Animal Shelter got one. I double-counted it a little bit, 'cause some people spoke on more than one issue.
Thank you much, that was amazing, your timing. Let us see if there are questions for you.
I'd love to have thirty more seconds.
We're gonna hold you to it. Well-
Okay. What additional point?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Lawrence, you're very gracious. All right, so, specifically back to the Marysi, I've heard there's a Recreation Commission in the borough, and I'm not optimistic about commissions having served on the Junkyard Task Force and the Recycling Commission, which seem to be boondoggles, but perhaps this would be subject for the Recreation Commission.
Thank you.
That's a good point. And Mr. Roberts has a question for you.
Oh, yes, sir.
You said the magic words, Junkyard Task Force.
Good.
Do you feel that more work could be done on specificity when it comes to defining junkyards, at least ones that the borough sees as being something that people are concerned about? I mean, do you think that there's more to be done, or do you think that the task force accomplished everything? Or was it halfway? You guys accomplished everything, but you couldn't get it through the Assembly?
I feel like we were sort of manipulated, and, you know, similar to my experience on the Recycling Commission, it was sort of like a Potemkin Village Junkyard Task Force, you know, this two-thousand-square-foot thing seems arbitrary, and I guess I generally felt a more laissez-faire attitude, rather than, you know, a bunch of smart people going around cleaning up everybody else. It just seems unfriendly and overzealous to me, and I just hate to see us, you know, I mean, there's all kinds of people in the world, but I just hate to see a bunch of money spent, local money spent, creating that type of conflict in the community.
Do you think more work could be done on the definition that currently exists?
Oh, sure, yeah, I think that anything that causes people to not be afraid of their government, and feels as though they're being invaded in their own homes, that's all extremely productive work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor has a question for you, Mr. Collins.
Yes, sir. Hypothetically, let's say you had ten fairly historic buildings that you were operating, and your budget would allow for maybe five of them, and if you could stretch your money, maybe you could get it to eight of them, how, what metrics would you use to evaluate the buildings to decide how you were gonna address the issue in front of you? What metrics would you use for that?
Well, clearly, sir, that's an overextended position, and, you know, I guess I don't have every number that you have access to, and I've been very impressed by your work to address this issue, and I'm sorry there aren't better answers, but as I said before, I mean, there's talk about spending millions of dollars on a garage that Mr. Lawrence found out by asking staff was not just a normal garage, you know, we're gonna, you know, maybe spend thirty-five million later to avoid spending six million now. I think there are judgment processes here that have mathematical and economic implications, and I'm concerned that people feel like there isn't a responsible way that this is being addressed, and so while I take the point of your question, that the numbers aren't working out, you know, it could be more than a matter of numbers. And, I mean, a lot of, I've heard people talking about starting nonprofit corporations, or people maybe showing some interest in becoming private individuals, for the Marysi Rec Center in particular, and I'm not in a position to do that, but, I mean, I would support discussions of that, and it seems to me that it's very constructive that we have everybody in this room now, trying to discuss that, but this is sort of, you know, like the eleventh hour, or eleven forty-eight, you know, on a process to resolve questions like this. So, I think that beyond the numbers, the public trust issue is huge, and however this is resolved, your point is that, well, next year it's gonna be a different building, and after that, it's gonna be a different building, and yet, we're still gonna have people spying on people eating their houses, and going around and cleaning up their yards for them, whether they like it or not, and, you know-
Is your question answered, Mr. Mayor?
That's, I mean, it's a matter of priorities, and it all takes, it all requires money. And so, people look at, well, what are you spending money on, and what are you not spending money on? And so, here we all are, talking about that, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Calder, we appreciate you coming down.
More questions?
I don't see any, thank you.
Oh, darn.
Oh, darn. But I do have an empty seat for a one-minute bite, and ma'am, I think you, is this your first time, so you have three minutes, please give us your name and spell your last name, and tell us your neighborhood.
My name is Janice Whitten, and my last name is spelled W-H-I-T-T-O-N.
Thank you. And your neighborhood?
And I live over in Goldrush.
Thank you.
We were, I came to the original board meeting where we were allowed to testify, and we got the impression that if the Marysi wasn't torn down immediately, nobody would vote for a bond. I'd like to address the point of people voting for things, or whatever, the money part of it. If I talk to people and I go around, the first thing I hear is, "Don't take away my permanent fund. Don't raise the tax cap. Don't give me any sales tax. Don't charge me any tax on any of my toys or anything." So, what I would like to see is, what is the borough doing to find some source of revenue, since they don't seem to be getting the money from the state to take care of the things that they need? And obviously, there's a problem with lack of funds, but there's gotta be some attempt somehow that I see, and I'm not, I don't know about all the rules as far as the borough goes for raising money and that kind of thing.
goes for raising money and that kind of thing. I don't know if you can have a sales tax here, if it has to be approved by the state or whatever. I'm just saying, what is the borough doing to get some resources? Because I already heard here tonight, somebody said, "No, we don't want the tax cap raised." The attitude of the people here in this state, because we've been getting the permanent fund so long, and we've been on the public dole, I'm sorry to say it, but that's how it is, they don't want to do anything to help anybody out. Now, you can give lots of donations and everything else, but as the general population goes, what are we doing to raise any funds? That's what I'd like to know.
Mr. Mayor has his hand up.
So a bond package is the only tool that we have in front of us essentially to go to the voters and ask them to approve a package which is on top of the tax cap. So the payments to pay back a bond are on top of the tax cap, in answer to your question. So that is a way to raise revenue if the voters approve it, and it's up to the community to make that decision.
Well, and having had two weeks to talk to people and everything else, I don't think there's a, I won't say it the way I want to say it, but I don't think there's a chance that a bond would pass in this borough for a rec center or those kinds of things.